Testing, one, two, three, testing. Testing, one, two, three.
Good evening. Welcome to the July 14, 2020 Combined Work Session Regular Virtual Meeting. The first item on the work session agenda is the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
During this unprecedented time, while schools are closed and social distancing requirements are in place, the Upper Darby School District needs to continue certain aspects of its business, which includes decisions concerning pandemic planning. For this reason, the Upper Darby School District will continue regularly scheduled school board meetings while Governor Wolf's emergency declaration is in place. It is the plan of the Board to hold these meetings with the minimum required departures from normal operating procedures. The Upper Darby School District School Board COVID-19 Special Operating Procedures Document outlines expected departures from these normal operating procedures and the policy justification for such departures. At the start of each board meeting held during the emergency declaration, the Board will review the departures from normal operating procedures as well as their justifications. While schools are closed and social distancing requirements are in place, the Upper Darby School District School Board finds it necessary to hold virtual school board and school board committee meetings to complete required business. These virtual meetings will allow for public viewings and participation. Following practices already in place for regular meetings, all virtual school board meetings, in addition to allowing near-real-time public viewing and participation, will be recorded and the recordings made available after the meeting. In order to hold virtual school board meetings, adjustments need to be made following existing school board policy. These adjustments have been outlined in the Upper Darby School District School Board COVID-19 Special Operating Procedures. Dr. McGary, can you provide some other information on how the public can participate in tonight's meeting? Thank you.
Yes, Board President Brown, and thank you for those who were able to log on and join this event this evening. First, I want to start off with that there are several items under new business that the Board will have to take action on. So if anybody would like to have a comment or a question for items under new business, please, when you do, send an email to committeequestions@upperdarbstd.org. Please note that it's under new business, whether it's the athletic plan or the phased reopening plan, that you indicate that along with your name and your address, and then you can please send us your comment regarding the phased reopening or the athletic plan. And I'll have this update throughout this evening. We're making every effort throughout the closure of our schools, as well as operating in the green phase here in Delaware County, to adhere to as much of the social distancing guidelines as we can. However, we still would like our public to participate as much as possible in our forums and in our meetings, and we've put a plan in place to make that happen. If you'd like to participate tonight and send any comments or questions, you may do so by sending an email to committeequestions@upperdarbstd.org. Please make sure that you give your name, your address, and please tell us which report you'd like to comment on, and we'll certainly make that a part of the record. You can also leave a message at 610-789-7200, extension 2000. We will make sure that a voicemail that is left for us will also become part of the record. Those who would like to have had public comment for just the general comment portion of this evening had to do so by 7:30 as we normally would at a normal board meeting. The Board will read comments prior to taking action on each individual board report this evening. Again, as a reminder, we do have several items under new business. They will not be under the regular reports, they will be under new business. And if you'd like to have a comment or a question under the items for new business, please send us the email at committeequestions@upperdarbstd.org, or you can call us at 610-789-7200, extension 2000. Again, please remember to leave your name, your address, as well as the agenda item you'd like to comment on this evening. Board President Brown, I would like to, throughout the evening, remind people of how to participate.
Please do. Thank you, Dr. McGary. We are really excited about the second item on the work session. The second item on the work session is Chloe Thompson, a sixth-grade student at Beverly Hills Middle School, who will read a letter that she wrote me in support of the superintendent's suggestion that Juneteenth be included in the curriculum. Chloe, are you there?
Yes.
Please read your wonderful letter.
Good evening, school board members. Juneteenth not only marks end of slavery in America, but it also emphasizes that the government said they would do something about slavery, and anyone who did it. However, it was unevenly enforced. Even though slavery officially ended in 1865, our country is still facing any con. I think that makes this holiday even more important. I think that everyone should learn about Juneteenth because it honors the day. I think that if people learned about Juneteenth, like to celebrate it, and it's important. In school, I do not learn about Juneteenth, and I think that's wrong. This is an important part of America. I learned about Juneteenth in my girl culture. I was upset when I realized that the announcement of this in the Emancipation Proclamation wasn't shared with everyone at the same speed. We also learned about Frederick Douglass, and I felt sad to realize what he went through as a child. I was inspired by him standing up against slavery and for the rights of women. I believe Juneteenth should be a national holiday, and I agree with Dr. McGary's decision on to suggest curriculum changes to include this in our discussion. Thank you.
Chloe, thank you so much for that excellent letter. We agree with all of the points you raise. Dr. McGary, with your permission, I'd like to invite Chloe to a school board meeting in person when this COVID stuff is over, so we can actually see her in person. And I believe we'll have a certificate with her name on it that I'm going to actually personally create. So is it okay if we invite her to a future meeting when we resume in person?
Absolutely. And Chloe, I'd like to say that the decision to put out the message that we put out, I hope you know, Chloe, the most important thing that we all do, especially during this period of time, is that we come together to make really good collective decisions. And when your mom reached out to us and shared your information, actually, Board President Brown, you know, we were moved. You're the future. You know, you're the change agent. That's why we do here in education. But I also want to make it known that the public has asked for this too, Chloe. So I don't want you to think that you have a fake leader in the Upper Darby School District who thinks it's just about me. There are a lot of people who have been pushing for this as well. It's a team effort. There's a lot of decisions that come into this. And we're working hard as a school district to get it right. We don't get it right every time, but when we don't get it right, our job is to make sure we make the right decisions moving forward. And I appreciate you reaching out to us. And as Board President Brown said, no doubt about it that we will recognize you. Normally, in a circumstance like this, we would have handed you a recognition from the Board. And we will certainly either mail you one, and definitely in person, make sure you get a photo opportunity to have that happen. I do want to take an opportunity to let Chloe know, I don't know if Mrs. Kelly is unmuted or able to talk tonight, but I know that she wanted to talk about not just that we say we're going to do it, Chloe, but I believe Christine Kelly, our Director of Curriculum Instruction, is going to comment where these changes are going to take place in our curriculum, Chloe, so you know we're for real. Ms. Kelly?
Hi, Chloe. My name is Christine Kelly. I'm the Director of Curriculum and Instruction. And Ms. Kenya and I have worked to implement a change in curriculum, which we will be presenting at a July committee meeting. The changes will occur in grades five, eight, and 11, and we're going to be writing this into the curriculum. So thank you for all that you're doing, and we are going to be making those changes, and you'll see it in our July committee meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chloe. We look forward to seeing you in person, and thank you for reading your amazing letter.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening.
Okay. The final item on the work session agenda is comments by the UDEA President, Melanie Massey-Antonio. I always say that wrong. I'm trying really hard, Melanie.
You did a very good job. Thank you, Mr. Brown, for giving me this opportunity to speak tonight. I hope everyone is staying safe and healthy. And I wanted to speak tonight about the plans for reopening schools. And I would like to thank Dr. McGary for providing many opportunities for our members and UDA officers to take part in the conversations regarding the opening of schools and for keeping us updated on County Health Department and Department of Ed recommendations, as well as sharing plans from local school districts. My members truly appreciate the information, but some of the recommendations and plans coming out of these institutions are concerning and not conducive to our school districts. The pandemic launched us into an unwitting experiment in online learning. And even though we will be better prepared come August if online learning is still required, our impromptu experiment has proven that the best way for a great majority of our students to learn is by being in schools and interacting with their teachers and classmates. Online learning leaves a void in the social and emotional elements that are necessary for human development and can only be best provided in a brick-and-mortar environment face-to-face. We, as educators, know this and want nothing more than to be in front of our students in August. We miss them. We want to be in our classrooms. We want to build relationships with our students, and that is best done in person. But we also want to be safe and healthy. We want our families, students and their families, to be safe and healthy. We want to be in front of our students, but with COVID-19 and the lack of true understanding about this virus, there are some serious concerns about how safe we will be if we go back to the classroom. Some recommendations by Chester County Health Department and the Pennsylvania Department of Education do not go far enough to provide for a safe school environment. For example, the CDC has been consistent with recommending a minimum of six feet for social distancing, but these organizations say you can go as little as three feet. Three feet is not safe, and it's never been considered safe and is not accessible. I would even go so far as to say it's not equitable. UDEA leadership took a survey of our members this weekend. We asked them, who fell into one of the CDC-identified at-risk categories? As of this morning, 40% of our respondents said that they fall in an at-risk category based on current CDC data, and over 66% of them responded that they are at risk or live with someone at risk. If strict adherence to social distancing, wearing masks or face shields, washing hands, and proper cleaning are not followed nor enforced, we put all staff and students at risk, especially those who have compromised health conditions. Not only they are at risk, but we are at risk, and we are at risk of bringing it home to our family members that may have serious health conditions. Dr. McGary's team and the Board have been working very hard to provide the safest environment possible, but we don't want the safest environment possible. We need the safest environment, the safest and nothing less. But regrettably, UDEA officers and our members do not think Upper Darby School District can adequately provide this due to years of underfunding by our state and national governments. With insufficient funding, how will Upper Darby School District be able to financially provide and continue to sustain the necessary PPE, staffing, and cleaning supplies needed to protect the health of our staff and students when our state does not even provide schools like ours with the adequate funding needed to properly support our students and their individual needs? These are serious concerns that UDEA has with opening school buildings for face-to-face instruction in August. We know this is a fluid situation and continues to evolve, but my members need assurances that if we go back to our classrooms and teach face-to-face, that the most stringent health protocols are followed and maintained, and that staff and students will be safe and protected from COVID-19. There are a number of unknowns in this situation creates a quagmire of uncertainty. We, Upper Darby Education Association, are respectfully requesting that the Upper Darby School District reflect on the current national and local trends involving this virus. COVID-19 has already claimed the lives of educators and children. It has infected students and staff at summer camps and summer schools. Make no mistake, this virus is serious, uncontrolled, and life-threatening. In closing, I implore our entire community to write to your representatives in Harrisburg and Washington. Tell your neighbors to write to their legislators. We need to demand the funding Upper Darby School District requires to provide the support and resources we need to maintain a safe, healthy, educational environment for our unique and diverse community. Our staff, students, and community deserve nothing less. Mr. Brown, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak, and I hope everyone listening stays safe and healthy. Thank you.
Thank you. It was my pleasure, Mrs. Massey-Antonio. Thank you very much for your passionate comments. The regular meeting of the Upper Darby School District Board of School Directors will please come to order. There was a closed session this evening from 5:30 p.m. until 7:26 p.m. for matters to be discussed within the limitations for closed deliberations as prescribed by Pennsylvania Act 93 of 1998. For this evening's meeting, there were personnel and litigation matters. Policy 003 allows the Board to suspend policies or parts of policies when appropriate. Therefore, due to the current ongoing crisis and the Governor's closure order, I make the following motions to suspend language in two of the Board's policies until the next regularly scheduled meeting. Policy 006.1, which regulates attendance at meetings via electronic communications, I move to suspend the language requiring Board members to be present. Specifically, the language would be, "A majority of Board members shall be physically present at a board meeting when a Board member attends through electronic communications." And Policy 006, which governs other requirements of board meetings, I move the suspension of language requiring that those members of the public wishing to participate be present. Specifically, the language in this section titled "Public Participation" would remove the words that read "present at a board meeting." Do I have a second?
This is Mrs. Mitchell. I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Anyone opposed, please state your name for the record. Anyone abstaining, please state your name for the record. Roll call, please, Mr. Rogers. I'm sorry. I think I jumped the gun.
So as I state your name, please state you're present, and you can hear the proceeding. Dr. Hague?
I am present, and I can hear the proceeding.
Mr. Desneuer?
I am present, and I can hear the proceedings.
Mr. War Savage?
I am present and can hear the proceeding.
Mr. Neal?
I am present and can hear the proceedings.
Ms. Dawes?
I am present, and I can hear the proceeding.
Mr. Fields?
I am present, and I can hear the proceedings.
Mrs. Curry?
I am present, and I can hear the proceeding.
Mrs. Mitchell?
I am present, and I can hear the proceeding.
Mr. Brown?
I am present. Okay. Let's see if I can scroll properly this time. The minutes of the Combined Work Session/Regular Meeting of June 2, 2020, and the Special Meeting of June 16, 2020 are in the hands of each Board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption. Do I have a second?
This is Mrs. Mitchell. I second that.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the Board? Are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. The report of the Secretary, Mrs. Curry.
Sorry about that. I was on mute. One second. Thank you. The report of the Secretary is in the hands of each Board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
This is Leah Dawes. I second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the Board? Mrs. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. Mr. Neal, the report of the Treasurer, please.
Thank you, President Brown. The report of the Treasurer is in the hands of each Board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
This is Mrs. Curry. I second it.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the Board? Mrs. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. The budgeted personnel and enrollment reports have been made available to the Board and the public and are recorded as part of the record. No vote is required. The report of the Superintendent, Dr. McGary.
Chloe, I just want to say, hopefully you are getting some rest tonight and have done other things. But I want to say thank you again. As I typed to you, I think it's refreshing. You're the reason why we do the work that we do here in our schools. And as I am about to give this report to the Board and to the public, our focus is on you, and I appreciate Mrs. Massey-Antonio's comments as well. I mean, it goes without saying that our students and our staff are why we're here, and they're important to the school district. So Chloe and Mel, thank you for your thoughts and your comments. Good evening, Board President Brown, Upper Darby family, members of the Upper Darby Board of School Directors, other administrators, staff, and students. I will be keeping my report as short as possible. I will be keeping my report as short as possible at this time because we have a decision to make this evening regarding the reopening of our schools. Since March 13th, as a district and community, we have all had to come together to navigate and understand the pandemic that is COVID-19, as well as the national crisis of social injustice. There is no question that the pandemic and realities of social injustice have furthered the value and need of our public schools. Our desire to return to normal stands to serve many needs: academic needs, social and emotional needs, and the economic needs of our community and the nation. As a superintendent of this richly diverse school district, however, I have been working with the district administration on a plan to provide the best educational opportunities we can while meeting the ever-changing parameters for reopening schools and for our staff to engage in meaningful conversations regarding equity and social injustice. Make no mistake about it, as you heard Mrs. Massentonio say, it has been a collective effort where we've been communicating with our staff and hopefully you, the public, as much as we can, and I'm grateful for the feedback and I'm grateful for your level of engagement. For my report this evening, I will be recommending a plan to reopen our schools, as well as our plan to address the call for our school district to act as a support and resource to end social injustice. First, the plan to reopen our schools has involved numerous hours of planning and preparation district-wide with as much staff as we can involve. I know that the Board of School Directors, administrators, and staff had read a number of reports and recommendations from the Center of Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC, the Bucks County Department of Health, Chester County Department of Health, American Academy of Pediatrics, World Health Organization, the Pennsylvania Department of Education, and a summary of reopening models by country. These are just a few of the many examples. I know no one wants excuses, so I'm not going to give you any. Our plans are imperfect and will require your support and the support of our staff. As complicated as this may seem, it is very clear to me that the safety for our community, our students, and our staff is the highest priority. I'm not going to get caught up in the recommended social distancing of six feet or three feet, who should wear a mask and who should not wear a mask, because all of the ever-changing rules and parameters and uncertainty have actually provided me with clarity. A return to full in-person instruction, while important and perhaps easiest to implement, and a quick return to normal does not protect all of our students: you, the parents and guardians of our students, our staff, and our entire community. I've heard many experts touting reopening models used from other countries, so I researched what I could find on how these other countries have been able to return to school with success. Here's what the information provided. I read that on average, class sizes in these countries who have already reopened were reduced to between 11 and 15 students in a class at a time. So what I've learned is reduced class size is important. Models focused on a return with younger students as a priority, and social distancing implemented to the maximum extent possible, not necessarily the minimum extent. Here in the Upper Darby School District, the recent guidelines from Governor Wolf, the Pennsylvania Department of Education, and the Chester County Department of Health, who has oversight over Delaware County, have really provided our district with two options for reopening schools. And we will go through this later on this evening as well, Board President Brown and those that are in the public, when we talk about new business, but I think it's important that everybody hears from the superintendent as well. We will provide a flexible instructional model emphasizing proper hygiene, wearing of masks and/or shields, and maintaining between five and six feet of social distancing for a return to in-person instruction and asynchronous instruction while not in school. Basically, the option would be for our elementary schools to return. My recommendation for that to happen would be for students to return half-day in cohorts four days a week, AM and PM, with Wednesdays providing opportunity for teachers to have office hours, professional development time, and improve their lesson planning if we have to go into the red phase. At the middle school level, my recommendation will be to have students come in cohorts on teams four days per week, rotating three classes in the AM, three in the PM. That would be our recommendation for the middle schools. Again, at the middle school, teachers will have an opportunity to have virtual meetings in the morning with students. Students will learn asynchronous in each one of these models on Wednesday, and teachers will have an opportunity to lesson and plan and get themselves caught up on the work that they're doing. The high school model, and I know this is complicated for everybody, would be four days per day, four periods per, um, two, four periods per day, four days per week, basically eight meetings per three-week rotating. Wednesday would be an opportunity where students would be learning asynchronously, teachers would be able to check in with students and families who need support, improve lesson planning, and have an opportunity to fine-tune their lessons for the upcoming week and the next day. This is the flexible instructional model that I like to see consistently across the school district with that Wednesday opportunity for teachers to lesson plan and have virtual meetings with students and families in need. What does this mean? This requires our schools to reduce the number of students in a building and a class at one time. For families who are not comfortable returning for any in-person instruction, we will provide an asynchronous learning model with teachers checking in with students and commenting and providing guidance on their work. And this is important because I don't know that this has been made clear everywhere throughout Pennsylvania. We will only be able to provide direct instruction from a teacher in a virtual model known as synchronous instruction if enough families select this option, thus freeing up staff. So if there are families who feel this option is best for their students and can provide at-home instruction and support this program, we would also probably be supporting the other students and the staff that are here. That would be a community effort, your acknowledgement that you could work with your student at home because it would not conflict with your work engagement, and that would free up even more of the social distancing and may provide us with more opportunities to get students in person and could free up teachers to provide synchronous instruction. Again, this is the model we would hope to provide you, a model that is a synchronous model, but that will come down to the number of families who select that. Why am I recommending this plan for the Upper Darby School District? I agree that returning students to school is important, but at this time, we are not able to provide the same level of safety and support if we open our schools for full in-person instruction as we can by implementing a cohort model. We will not be able to meet all of the recommended guidance for students, for you, our parents, and our guardians, or our staff with a full return to in-person instruction. We simply do not have enough space and capacity to meet the recommendations. And again, this is not up for debate as a superintendent in the school district. The three feet and six feet, as Mrs. Massentonio said, we want to get to six feet. Masks will be something that we want to have our students have, and we'd like our teachers to be as safe as possible providing this instruction. I recognize that this may create obstacles for our families, but I feel this is the best solution at this time based on the information I have. Our plans, regardless of what option our Board of School Directors approves this evening, will allow us to move from one option to another option from semester to semester. We will work with families who request a virtual option following board action this evening. The reason why Beverly Hills Middle School were asking to shift some of the students over there is so that we can provide an equitable opportunity for those students to have as much in-person instruction as any other middle school student in the district. No one plan is perfect, and we should expect to make adjustments as we learn more information. There may be times when we must shift from some in-person learning to fully virtual learning and back again. Is our hope to return to full in-person instruction when social distancing guidelines are relaxed? We are looking to go one-to-one with our technology in this school district to start the school year so that in the event that we have to move out of one model to another, we can guarantee that at least our students all have a device at home to access the curriculum. Please know that this recommendation does not come lightly, and I am asking for the support of our families and our staff to provide the best learning environment we can, given the circumstances. As I move on from the focus on reopening our schools, as I'm sure there'll be many questions later, I wanted to take an opportunity this evening to report on our district's efforts to promote unity for the students we serve and the community we serve. I hope everyone understands and recognizes that the Upper Darby School District will not tolerate hateful, bigoted, and racist comments. Unfortunately, we have had to address staff who have made distasteful comments or actions that do not represent who we are as a district. Moving forward, we will investigate and inform the public of incidents where such insensitive and hurtful and hateful incidents take place. I would also like to add that we have conducted investigations recently where accusations about some staff ignoring or condoning racist actions by students or other staff were unfounded and not accurate. It is important that we are honest with you in order to keep and earn your trust. Regardless of the outcomes of any of our investigations, it is clear that there is real trauma, and real trauma has occurred, whether it's with our staff or our community and our students. What I know is real, however, is that people are hurting and our schools play a vital role in helping our community, staff, and students heal. A year ago, I referenced a plan to form a community advisory committee. I am happy to report that I provided the board with a proposal from the Catalyst Community Conversations at the Penn Graduate School of Education. Phase one of the proposal will include designing and conducting a series of productive conversations about race and equity. During phase one of this work, we will be looking to develop an advisory group of 12 to 15 individuals from various age groups and people who represent as much as possible the racial, age, ethnic, socio-economic diversity in this district and township. We're also committed to our work with Corwin and our work on deep equity with our staff and students. Over the last two years, the district has committed to professional development in the area of equity, trauma-informed instruction, restorative justice, continued or positive behavior and intervention support systems, increased our pupil services department, implemented youth courts in our schools, and shared plans to improve our learning facilities. And I add that as part of social injustice because, as Mrs. Massentonio said, it's a social injustice that our facilities are not provided with the same level of financing or state support as others have been. It's unfair that students don't have the same access to quality educational learning environments. Case in point is that our older outdated buildings don't meet with the requirements that we're now being asked to meet with opening our schools. I believe the end result of the work with the Catalyst Community Conversations at the Penn Graduate School of Education and with their help, and the development of a community advisory committee, it will aid in our discussions about improving our schools in order to support the community. Again, as we look to reopen our schools for the 2020-21 school year, I'm asking for your patience and your support, and I'm asking for your flexibility. Board President Brown, thank you for listening to my report this evening. It concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. I really appreciate your comments. We will now have an update on the June 16, 2020 Education and Pupil Services Committee Report. Mrs. Mitchell?
Thank you, President Brown. This is Mrs. Mitchell. We had a Education and People's Services Committee meeting on June 16. The agenda was as follows. One, the Wellness Committee Annual Update, which was an informational item. Dr. Puglisi presented the board with an update on the work accomplished over the course of the past school year to improve wellness across our district. He provided an overview of the PDE tool and template that was used to evaluate effectiveness of our wellness policy 246. This item was informational and correlated to Goal 1 and 4 listed in the UDSC Comprehensive Plan. I just want to make sure everyone can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. Item number two, 2020-2021 Professional Development Calendar, that is for board action. Mrs. Kelly presented the 2020-2021 Professional Development Calendar in accordance with District Policy 333. The Professional Development Calendar is used as a guide to provide teachers, students, services, staff, and new district employees the instructional tools to support effective practices in their area of expertise. This item is required board action and correlated to all six goals listed in the UDSC Comprehensive Plan. Item number three was the adjusted Keystone Exam Requirements. Board action is required, and you'll see that tonight. Dr. Manfree and Mrs. Kelly presented the PDE recommendations for the 2020-2021 Keystone Exam Administration. The recommended adjustments are a result of the recent school closure. This item required board action and correlated to Goals 4 and 5 of the UDSC Comprehensive Plan. Number four was instructional online resources. It's also for board action. Mrs. Kelly presented a variety of online instructional resources and tools necessary to deliver online instruction. These resources were selected as a result of teacher input and free access during the school closure. All appropriate district paperwork was completed and is available on board docs. This item requires board action as then correlated to Goals 2, 3, and 6 of our UDSC Comprehensive Plan. Number five is the Upper Darby High School Course Catalog Resisions Considerations, also up for board action this evening. Dr. McGary presented proposed changes to the High School Course Selection Guide. This item required board action and correlated to Goals 4, 5, 6 in the UDSC Comprehensive Plan. There were two public comments, which you can read on board docs, as well as this full summary. Thank you for allowing me to present this tonight, President Brown.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Mitchell. We will now have the update on the June 16, 2020 Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Dr. Haig?
Thank you, President Brown. The Finance and Operations Committee met on Tuesday, June 16 at 7:00 PM. The agenda had three items, all of which required board action. The first was an updated use of facilities operating procedures. The district administration shared its plan to implement an online use of facilities management system. Administration asked the board to approve Facilitron as the district's use of facilities software. This item correlated to Goal 1 of the UDSC Comprehensive Plan. The second agenda item was the 2020-2021 Final Budget Presentation. In compliance with the Act 1 timeline, the district administration presented the final general fund budget. The budget has taken all available and relevant information into consideration and is presented with a 2.6% tax increase. Just for clarification, that agenda item was covered during a special voting meeting immediately after the committee meeting, again, to remain in compliance with the Act 1 timeline, so we are not voting on that item tonight. And then finally, item three, the policies, Policy 707, Use of School Facilities. There was one public comment regarding Agenda Items 2 and 3. That comment can be read on board docs, and I would also encourage anyone who wants to hear the follow-up because the comment is long and included many questions. If anyone wants to hear the follow-up on those questions, to please go to the School Board tab on the website and find the link to the video for that meeting because we did respond to all of those questions, and so if you read the summary, you'll really want to hear the answers in the video. Thank you, President Brown.
Thank you very much, Dr. Haig. Next, we'll have the Instruction and Curriculum Report. Mrs. Curry?
The Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
This is Leah. I second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Mrs. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. Now we'll have the Personnel Report, but before we do that, we're going to have, we're going to take a moment of silence for Mrs. Bailey, a vital member and parent and grandparent who was a member of the Highland Park family. So can we please have a moment of silence for her, please? Thank you very much. Debbie Bailey? Okay, that was her full name. Mrs. Curry, did you want to have, did you have any comments for Mrs. Bailey? I think you met her personally on several occasions.
Yes, thank you, President Brown. I just wanted to just make a comment about the loss of Mrs. Bailey back in June, and I just want to quickly read what Ms. DeVito sent out to the 4th grade family. She was actually honored back in the October board meeting, and Mrs. DeVito, principal at Highland Park, sent out to the dear 4th grade family, "It is with a heavy heart that I am writing this to tell you that our foster grandparent, Mrs. Bailey, passed away. She was a very kind and compassionate person who loved our Highland Park students. We will miss her very much." And she was, she worked very closely with the 4th graders, and she was in my daughter's classroom, a lovely person, and it was, it's with a heavy heart that we had to say goodbye to her in June. And so I just wanted to let everyone know how special she was to us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Curry. The Personnel Report, Mrs. Mitchell?
The Personnel Report is in the hands of each Board Member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
This is Leah Dawes, I second.
Are there any comments from the board? Well, before?
Yes.
Okay. Who said yes?
Rachel.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I just wanted to acknowledge our retirees tonight on a safe and healthy retirement. I also want to acknowledge Mr. Philip Bush, who has had many hats in our Transportation Department over the years, and he will be missed. I also would like to welcome our new professional appointment. Welcome to the UDSC family. Thank you, President Brown.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell.
President Brown, I also have a comment.
Please, please, Mrs. Curry.
This is Gina Curry. I just wanted to make a comment and thank all of the summer school teachers who are working very hard virtually this summer to provide the summer school experience for our children. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board? Mr. War Savage?
I'm sorry about that technical difficulty. Just wanted to also offer a moment of silence for another district family member that we lost, Amy Corona. I believe she passed away on July 3. Just lift up the family in your hearts and your minds and moment of silence if at all possible.
Thank you. We will have a moment of silence. Thank you very much, Mr. War Savage, for bringing that to our attention. Any other comments from the board? I actually have one. This is Ed Brown, School Board President, and I want to address an item found on the current Personnel Report. Recently, the board completed its annual assessment of Superintendent Dr. Dan McGary. The consensus was that Dan had an excellent year and his overall rating was distinguished. The current terms of the superintendent's contract calls for an annual 2% cost of living increase and a 2% increase if he achieves a rating of proficient or distinguished. Based on Dan's performance, the board worked with our solicitor, Kyle Berman, to amend the contract to give the board the ability to grant the superintendent up to a 5% increase based on performance. For the 2019-2020 school year, the board agreed to grant Dan an additional 2%. His new salary, as per his contract, is retroactive back to July 1. While we agree that Dan had a great year, he and the board also agree that there is always areas for improvement and more work is needed to engage the community. He is committed to strengthen these areas and continue to position the district to achieve its comprehensive board and strategic goals. Thank you. Are there any comments, any other comments from the board? Mrs. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. The Supplies Report, Mr. War Savage?
Thank you, President Brown. The Supplies Report is in the hands of each Board Member and has been made available to the public. Before I move forward with this adoption, I did want to draw attention to one part of it in particular that I am very happy about. It looks as though we are investing in a brand-new trailer for the van, and I am so glad that the taxpayers of Upper Darby School District have helped make this possible, and I know that it's been a long time in coming, and it's very well-deserved. So I'm glad to see that. But I do move forward with this adoption.
Thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. Is there a second?
This is Leah Dawes, I second.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dawes. Are there any comments from the board? Mrs. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. The Facilities Report and the Use of Facilities Report, Mr. Fields?
Mr. Brown, I apologize. Can we jump back?
Sure.
I know that there isn't necessarily any new policy. I apologize.
Okay.
But I do believe Mr. Desneuer has an update for the public on policy, and I'm sorry, I was supposed to check in on you on that.
No problem, no problem.
Mr. Desneuer's?
Thank you, Dr. McGary. Yes, there is a policy update item on the agenda, and this was added shortly before the meeting. There are no policies up for first reading or second reading this evening, but there is an important policy update about future policy change. And that update concerns the Title IX, Policy Governed by Title IX, which Title IX is a U.S. Department of Education Regulation that provides for equal access to educational opportunities and therefore prohibits discrimination based on sex in educational settings. So in mid-May this spring, the U.S. Department of Education issued extensive updates to Title IX, and as part of those updates decreed that the appropriate policies must be changed, that this school board and all school boards in Pennsylvania and across the country have to implement changes to policies by August 14. So normally, to meet this timeline, such changes would appear in a first reading at tonight's board meeting and then be discussed at the July 28 Committee Meeting before having a second reading and being adopted at the August 11 board meeting. Because the changes are so extensive, the Pennsylvania School Board Association, from which we get our policy, our recommended policy changes, has not had a chance to prepare the model policy that the school district will be adopting. And for that reason, what will happen is the policy changes related to this Title IX regulation change will be discussed at the August 28, sorry, at the July 28 Committee Meeting, and then at the August 11 board meeting, I am going to recommend that the board waive the first reading of these changes and approve at that meeting, the August 11 board meeting, the policy changes that are required by the U.S. Department of Education to be implemented by August 14. And so we are doing this as a one-time exception to our normal policy adoption process, and this, we're only doing this because the U.S. Department of Education has dictated that we have specific changes to policy language implemented by August 14. And the fact that these new regulations were issued by the U.S. Department of Education not long ago in the middle of May and are extensive, the changes take up 2,000 pages, we have not had the time to prepare policy changes for first reading tonight. So you will, you will hear more about this both at the July 28 Committee Meeting and at the August 11 board meeting. Thank you, Dr. McGary and Mr. Brown. That concludes my policy update.
Thank you, Mrs. Desneuer's. Thank you, Dr. McGary, for bringing that to my attention.
Sure.
I apologize. Mr. Fields, the Facilities Report, please, and the Use of Facilities Report.
The Facilities Report, thank you, President Brown. The Facilities Report and the Use of Facilities Report are in the hands of each Board Member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
This is Leah Dawes, I second.
Thank you. Are there any comments?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion that Item Number 4, the fee be waived. This is a government entity asking to use the Performing Arts Center on July 27, the District Attorney's Office. So in the past, we have waived fees for government entities, so I would like to make a motion that we waive this fee on Number 4 on the Use of Facilities Report.
This is Don Fields. I second that motion.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Sure.
Sorry?
Process-wise, you vote on the amendment, and then if that passes, you'll vote on the underlying motion.
Okay. So we'll, thank you, Kyle. We'll come back to that part on your motion, Mrs. Mitchell. We'll vote on the Facilities Report that Don already proposed, and I think Leah already seconded it. So are there any other comments from the board?
President Brown, this is Don Fields. I have just one reminder that I'd like to go over about the Use of Facilities. All requests to the district for the use of district facilities, whether inside or outside, shall be subject to any CDC and Pennsylvania Department of Health recommended steps and precautions related to preventing the spread of COVID-19, of the COVID-19 virus, current at the time of the scheduled event. Groups that are discovered during their scheduled events to be noncompliant with these precautions may have their event prematurely terminated and jeopardize their future requests. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments from the board? Mrs. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record.
President Brown, this is David Neal. I just want to make sure, are we voting on the Use of Facilities Report or the Amendment? I believe the Amendment needs to be voted on first and then the Use of Facilities, if I heard Kyle Berman correct. And right now, we just voted on the, the report, not the Amendment.
We're voting on?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what we voted on, but I, I understood that to be a vote on the Amendment because that was the motion that was then pending.
So your guidance was that we needed to vote on the Use of Facilities first and then the Amendment, Kyle? Is that backwards now? Which is it?
No, no, I, if that's what I said, I didn't mean to. What I meant to say, what I thought I did say was that you vote on the Amendment, and then after that either passes or fails, you vote on the underlying motion.
Okay, we was about to vote on the Amendment, and you stopped us. So we will vote on the Amendment, the Amendment that Rachel posed. Is that what you're advising us to do?
That is correct. We vote on the Amendment, and then we vote on the underlying motion.
Okay. Dr. McGary?
In between that, I want to make sure, is public comment, because this is coming up right now, public comment as well, Kyle? We should wait a minute for public comment in between some of this?
You don't need public comment on the motion for the, for the Amendment.
Okay. Okay, so we are now about to vote on the Amendment that Rachel? David Neal, you have another comment before we vote on the Amendment?
Well, yeah, my comment is regarding the, the fee. I believe that we should be charging the fee because the high school Performing Arts Center is in district prayer with certain regards to seating and all, and I believe waiving any fee would be, in hindsight, a poor decision.
Any other comments from the board? Okay. We already had a motion by Mrs. Mitchell. It's been seconded, and we had comments from the board, and now we're about to vote on the Amendment to waive the fee for the government entity that would like to use the Performing Arts Center. All those in favor of waiving the fee, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record.
Aye oppose, David Neal.
Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. I abstain. This is Edward Brown. I am part of the committee appointed by DA Jack Stolsteimer to be a part of the 21st Century Policing Working Group, so I do abstain. And based on the votes, Mr. Rogers, motion carried?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carried. Now we will return to the Facilities and Use of Facilities Report that Don Fields made a motion, and it was seconded. Are there any comments from the board on the Facilities Report, any Use of Facilities Are there any comments from the public?
I have a comment, Mr. Brown.
Yes. Yes, Mrs. Mitchell.
I just wanted to say thank you to the administration for being creative and coming up with a new plan for where the administration could move as we move forward with the Aronomic Project to help us provide equity to all students in the Upper Darby School District. So thank you.
Thank you very much for that comment. Dr. McGary, did you want to mention anything about that, or?
Yes, and I believe if there is a public comment on this around, if you have a chance to check in on it for a second, I'll go first, and then you guys can, can get to that because it's coming in now. Yes, I want to say that we've hired some unbelievably new folks here in the school district, Craig Harnacek, Marvin Lee, Tim Lambert, Craig Rogers in his role, but I think this move to the administration... think this move to the administration out of Aronimic provides us with a great opportunity. And I think using our own facilities, obviously there was pushback when the school district was looking to lease property outside of the school district. You know, the Gulf Building, which is on Lansdowne Avenue, really wasn't much of a consideration until we brought in some new, fresh perspective. And I just want to compliment the, the new folks that are working here in the school district and they put together an unbelievable plan where we can now move out of the Aronimic building and into an already existing building in the school district and improve that and make that a much more attractive feature for the community. So compliments to that team to pull that off and for the board having the vision to support that and the patience and also for the public pushback on leasing the building. So I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. Were there any other comments from the board? Okay, Mrs. Buford, were there any comments from the public?
I don't see a comment specific to this. Can you bring that to my attention, Dr. McGary?
I believe that there was a, a general comment coming in from a Mrs. Smith. When an amendment is made live during the meeting, how is the public supposed to give comment on that vote? And according to, I believe Mr. Berman just said, that there is not a need for public comment at that point in time.
Okay. That, that comment was not in line with the board procedures outlined for public comment, but I'm glad that we addressed it.
Mr. Berman, did you have any other explanation for that since that was brought up in light of the guidance you provided?
The, yeah, the amendment was, and the reason why there was no requirement for public comment at that point was because the amendment was simply on what was the item that the board is ultimately going to vote on. The board has the option to change what the thing is that it's voting on and, and it is not subject to the same comment period. There has to be an opportunity for comment, however, once the, the motion is then prepared for the board to, to then vote. So in other words, in this case, there was a motion to change the, the fee that was applicable. The public certainly has the opportunity to comment about the fee that is going to be charged, but they don't necessarily have a right to decide to make comment about the, the decision of whether the board will change it. I'm not sure if that made sense. In other words, simply what the board's motion will be is not subject to the same right, that's all.
Okay. Mrs. Buford, were there any other comments from the public?
Not regarding this matter.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain. Aye abstain again for the same reason, this is Edward Brown. And I believe the motion carried. We are now at the finance and budget report. Dr. Hague.
Thank you, President Brown. The finance and budget report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
This is Gina Curry. I second it.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Hearing none, are there any comments from the public, Mrs. Buford?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. We are now at the collateral assignment reports. So we'll start with Delaware County Community College, Mrs. Curry.
Thank you, President Brown. There are no updates on the Delaware Community College at this time. We have not met as a liaison board. Thank you.
Thank you. The DCIU, Mrs. Mitchell.
I do not have an update at this time.
Thank you. Legislative Council, Mr. Fields.
Thank you, President Brown. The Legislative Council doesn't meet over the summer. Legislatively, all I can say is that people should start getting their P-E-B-T cards now, which provides money for groceries. This is, as a reminder, this is a federal program administered by the state. If there's an issue with that card, to resolve it, you need to go through SNAP, the SNAP EBT program to address that. Nobody at the school district can help you with that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. The Mendenhall Tyson Scholarship Committee, Dr. Hague.
No update at this point. We just hope our, our scholarship recipients get to have some in-person experience in the fall, but I hope they do well, whatever, whatever stuff's happening for them.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hague. Home and School, Mr. Warsavage.
Thank you, President Brown. I have no update in regards to home and school at this time.
Okay, thank you, sir. Technology, I do have a question for Dr. McGary, or the, the collection of the Chromebooks, is that completed or is that still ongoing? I still have a Chromebook in my house that I need to return, so I want to, I don't want to get my hands sping publicly, but I did want to ask about that.
So we still have students who are participating in programs throughout the summer. I know that there are those who have used the Chromebooks for summer stage. I know that there are those who are in summer school till, I think, believe July 23rd. So many dates in my mind of dates that we have to meet. So we have summer school still taking place. We still have extended school year for special education students. We have summer school programming virtually for students that are in our English Learners Program. So yes, it'll be ongoing for this, return of the school year. And again, we're going to get them back in, get them cleaned back up and get them back out. We are getting folks to turn their Chromebooks in. I do want to mention that Bob Walensky is not able to be here tonight. His mother passed away recently, but Bob is working diligently to get them back as well as his team Chuck Laut, who's done an excellent job, and they're coming in. You know, I think one week we had 300 and some odd Chromebooks returned in one week. We're not to the number that we gave out, but we're working on that because there are a number of students still participating in work over the summer, which is a compliment to the staff and to the students that are working. So you can certainly turn yours back in, we'll get it cleaned up and if you're child and, and we'll get you the new ones when we start the school year.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. PSBA, Mrs. Curry, did you have something you want to offer for PSBA?
Yes, thank you, President Brown. I wanted to highlight that the PSBA Equity Division with Dr. Heather Bennett held a series of webinars that we were invited to in June, and I attended along with Dr. McGary and Rachel Mitchell, Vice President Rachel Mitchell, the June 18th, 2020, addressing the moment. And it was a wonderful webinar that provided us with racial equity ideas and they had a wonderful panel of superintendent, the superintendent from Reading, superintendent, assistant superintendent from Lower Marion, and I believe there was a diversity officer there from the State College Area School District. And it was a really good, a really good panel and a wealth of information. And I've just received the online information, so if anyone is interested, we can definitely share it. There was also a Building the Equity Foundation Through Policy on June 25th and Understanding the Board's Role, that all that Dr. Bennett offered through the Equity Division of the PSBA. I also wanted to mention that we, Dr. Counsel and myself, we also attended a summit that the, it was through Chaney University on the ideas of mentoring and retaining and recruitment around minority candidates. And so that was also a wealth of information and a lot of good collaborative connections that we made with different individuals throughout the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr., not, Mr. Desnoyers, any other policy updates? You gave some good information earlier on policy, anything to add?
Yes, I, I believe this came out of the same PSBA Equity Initiative that Ms. Curry just mentioned, but the PSBA has proposed a model policy dealing with educational equity. And the policy committee took a brief look at it and President Brown asked that the Comprehensive Equity Team provide input, so they are currently reviewing it. And after that, it will come up for consideration at a future board meeting. It will very likely come up with, for consideration by the board at a future board meeting. So stay tuned on that. And that's all the updates I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Desnoyers. I appreciate that. Communication, Mrs. Mitchell, did you have anything or Mr. Neal?
Yeah, I, I did just want to acknowledge that the administration has been communicating more than ever and, and I'm sure families are starting to get overwhelmed with the amount of emails that they're receiving. I do want to reiterate how important all of the emails, especially during this time when we're experiencing the pandemic, is, and if you have questions about any communication, please email committeequestions@upperdarbyfc.org. And I know that the administration is doing their very best to get back to everyone as quickly as possible. So thank you for your extra effort in, in this difficult time where this is really the only way we can communicate with each other.
Thank you very much. Next, we have old business. Is there any old business from board members? Hearing none, we will move on to, oh, I'm sorry.
We, we do have some old business.
Mr. Brown.
Mr. Brown, sorry. Kyle, you can jump in if you'd like. It's in regard to the Aronimic Project, old business giving an update.
Thank you. Yes, I'm sorry, I, I didn't jump in because the invitation was for board members. However, I do have an update for you from the, concerning Aronimic. I just wanted to let everybody know that the district has received an open bid for the Aronimic Project. Those bids came in below the amount budgeted for those improvements and upgrades. As a result, the district will save money on this project as long as it's able to afford with these bids. However, there are neighbors in the area of the Aronimic School who filed legal objections to the township's approval of the project, and that matter is currently pending in court. As things stand, the district is evaluating its options and determining when it will award bids based upon the above court matter. We hope that, we hope to have further discussion about this in the near future. In the meantime, as the law permits, we will hold the complaint, the compliant and timely bids that were received with an award expected within the statutory timeline. Thank you, Mr. Brown. That's all that I have.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. Sorry, I didn't mean to skip you. Now we'll move on to new business. We have a number of items to address. The first item under new business is the Athletics Health and Safety Plan. Dr. McGary.
Thank you, Board President Brown. This is a retroactive approval because the state and the Commonwealth has allowed school districts to begin their non, their involuntary workouts with athletes here at the school, at the high school. The plan's been made available. We have vetted it and made it up to date with the most recent mask requirement guidelines as far as students coming to campus and wearing a mask and practicing social distance while they're not completing athletically. The biggest concern that we have here as a school district this time is we, we still have not had clear guidance regarding whether we will have actual sporting events in the fall. We are closely monitoring how colleges and universities and professional sporting programs are handling this. At this time, we are moving forward with this athletic plan and providing as much protection and guidance as possible, cleaning the areas where students would be gathering, deep cleaning of those areas, obviously enforcing proper hygiene, temperature checks. Although there's this false positive with temperature checks, we are implementing much of that guidance. Masks are to be worn when they're not working out rigorously or being on the field. Coaches should be wearing masks as well, and we should be practicing the social distancing of at least six feet at all times if we're not engaged in actually the athletic activity. The other point to this, Board President Brown, is while, you know, we are looking to move forward with our athletic program, there is also recent guidance talking about how our bands and our music programs can move forward. As we all know here in Upper Darby School District, our music programs are just as important as any program that we have to offer. The difficult part of the music program is that, for example, our wonderful choral program with Mrs. Barb Bengley at the high school and at our middle schools, right now the guidance is that you cannot have a full group of students together singing even if they wear masks. So we're still working through how the music programs and bands and cleaning of band instruments can happen. I did provide the board with some updates and some information regarding the national suggestions, and they're pretty rich and pretty deep. I've asked Dr. Manfrey, Mrs. Simone to coordinate a meeting with the high school UD BOF, the band parents and the band team and as well as the, sorry, the band students as well as the music program to work together on how we can implement that as well with our music program. It's not that we're just focusing on athletics and not the music program, but the guidance has come out much more so for the sports programming. I'm not so sure where that's going to lead to. I can say this to everybody here, though, for the fall, and I hope the board, we can, we can put this more formalized. Many school districts will be limiting visitors, not only to the campus during school time if students are in session, but in particular, performances or sporting events, at least through the fall. I know the Upper Darby School District, if we are to hold a sporting event, it would be limited to just those participants and those needed to put on the, the event. We would not be having audiences or spectators attend sporting events or musical events here in the school district because obviously in the green phase, we're still looking to limit 250 people in one space at one time. And because of the social distancing implications and the mask wearing, our focus will be on our students and our student athletes and keeping them safe. So if we are to put on any kind of performance or any kind of sporting event, we would be limiting outside participation and way of fans if that were to happen moving forward. And I think the board should also consider when we open the schools up for the fall, if we do, unless we're virtual, that we limit outside use of our facilities because of keeping them clean throughout the school year, I think is important as well. Thank you, Board President Brown.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. Would a member of the board like to make a motion to move this forward?
I motion to move this forward.
President Brown, I have a comment.
Okay.
Yes, Dr. McGary, you just made a comment about limiting the outside. Does that include playgrounds?
At this, at this point in time, when we are allowing playground use while school's not in session, but as we go to the school year, I think outside use of facilities are much easier to maintain and manage than indoor facilities. So thank you for that, for that question. My recommendation as we move forward when school returns for in-session learning, if the board chooses that option, if they choose virtual options, obviously that we wouldn't be letting, I wouldn't think anybody in, in the facilities. But Ms. Curry, my comment is more about the use of internal spaces, not the external spaces, where the recent guidance is that social distancing and being out in the open spaces is less of a concern, although it's still a concern, in comparison to using closed spaces where there could be more mass gathering of people.
Okay, I think Mr. Fields made a motion. Thank you.
I'd like to make a second. This is Mrs. Mitchell on the athletic plan.
Okay. Mr. Neal has a comment? Mr. Neal, comments from the board?
Thank you, President Brown. This is David Neal. Dr. McGary, I had a quick question. Has there been any discussion regarding the televising of the sporting events, like live streaming, so parents could in fact watch their kids participate in an athletic game or, or such, or another event?
Yes, we are working through those options. You know, if we were to put on a musical performance, we have the capability, we've demonstrated the livestream events and we've talked about that. I do want to be clear to the board and the public, I, I want to be cautious. I think we set a precedent, and I know that some don't feel that it was as successful as I do. I think the administration and Jason Taylor, considering we have one kind of person who does a lot of that work here in the school district, we put on a lot of virtual events. And we have to be wise that in the event that we're shut down and we're closed, we don't have necessarily the capacity to keep producing videos and celebrations. We just don't have enough resource to do that. So again, that's a part of the patience. I think we all have to work together. We're going to try to recognize and support as much as we can in a virtual environment, but there has to be an understanding that we don't have the capability of constantly doing everything that way. We just don't have all the resources. And Jason Taylor is only one person. He does a phenomenal job, but he can't be everywhere. We have to be reasonable with those expectations. Nonetheless, we would try to balance as many of the sporting events or musical performances as possible, but we have to be wise about the equity there, you know? You know, a football game shouldn't get more exposure than a girls lacrosse or some other sporting event either. And sometimes events happen at similar times. So we'd have to be wise to make sure that we're balancing our celebration of all of our athletes and recording that. And maybe this is an example of how, you know, we can work together with individuals in the community to help livestream some of these events. I think this is an opportunity for us to work together to do that. So yes, a long-winded answer, I apologize, but we would like to try to have those virtual opportunities for all to access them. But we have to be realistic about the lack of resources that we have right now and how can we work together to solve that. That'd be an example of something I'd love to have a community advisory to say, look, we only have one Jason Taylor, but we could have several people who might be on call to help us livestream something like that.
Thank you for your response, Dr. McGary.
Okay, so I heard a motion and I heard a second. Are there any other comments from the board? Mrs. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstaining and state your name for the record. Motion carried. The second item under new business is the phased school reopening health and safety plan. Dr. McGary.
Yes, and I'd like to, again, take a moment that, to reiterate that these, you know, are plans that are obviously imperfect, and we recognize again that we're, we're trying to open our schools to the best of our ability. As you heard Mrs. Massantonio say, the head of the UDA leadership, and it's not lost on any of us, that our staff is important. We often hear a lot of the reporting about how this may not impact younger students, and that's open for debate, and I'm not willing to have that debate. I believe that the missing part of this are the staff. So I do see a value in returning students to school. I also see the value in having a virtual synchronous, not asynchronous, because I think that's a struggle. So we're trying to balance both of those options, and I think we've created some flexible plans that would allow us to do that. A couple of weeks ago, I reported Board President Brown's concern regarding the 180 days and the 900, 990 hours. That is referred to in Pennsylvania as Act 80. That's why the school board has to approve a calendar each year, and that's why school, school days are the type and length that they are. Because in the state of Pennsylvania, you have to have a minimum of a certain number of hours per level, as well as a minimum of 180 school days. The guidance, ironically, at the time, before we put these plans in place and before the pandemic, was this debate whether or not the governor or the secretary of education had the opportunity to dictate if we can flex in and out of the actual number of days and hours in a plan. And when the pandemic hit, and I think this is part of the hypocrisy, I think, that's going on right now. A pandemic happened, it was real, we're clearly hearing that it's real, and I think people reacted and tried to provide safety with what information they had at the time. And closing the schools, and again, that's open for debate, was a recommendation that was made, and schools had to rush to put these plans in place. Schools should be celebrated for their effort, and teachers should be celebrated for their effort. At the same time, it was clear that giving state testing was not a high priority, and focusing on the number of hours and days, although important, when a pandemic hit showed that we need flexibility. So then it became the, as I said during my last board meeting, this idea of uncertainty. All we can, all we know is the future is going to be different, and education's going to look different. It's going to be different, prepare for being different. And we've all been working hard as superintendents for what is different and not staying with the old way of doing things. So then it became a battle legally whether or not the 180 days, the 900 and the 990 hours could be a flexible model. I'm happy to report that there is a belief that there is flexibility, and that the Upper Darby School District, if the board is so moved to pick one of the flexible options, the one that I recommended earlier that I review again, that the board would be okay to meet, and would be, I think, okay of meeting the hours and the days, based on Governor Wolf and based on Secretary Rivera's latest guidance. Nonetheless, the board does have a resolution prepared for this evening, that after I go through these options again in our phased reopening plan for the school district, if the board is so moved to come back in a situation to start the school year where it would be in a flexible model, meaning that we would have students in an AM and a PM cohorts of students coming in for four days instruction at the elementary school level, and obviously different at the middle school and elementary school, and I'll go through that in a moment, that there's a resolution that we would also approve this evening that would provide us that protection, we believe, provide us that protection from the 180 days and the 900, 990 hours. Nonetheless, different than the March 13 shutdown, students who learn virtually, whether it's asynchronous or synchronous, will be an option, that students will have an option because this has been the guidance from the CDC, from everyone, that you should still provide students with an option who do not feel comfortable returning, to have a virtual option. Technically, the law that was in debate says you can't do that. So it's confusing. If we're supposed to provide a virtual option, how can that be in conflict? So what we do know is that we'll have an expectation of attendance being taken, students will have to log in at specific times and complete work, meaning that there'll be an expectation that we're holding you more accountable, even more so than we did when the pandemic happened this past year. That's why we took our time when the school year ended, to get ourselves in a better position to be prepared to provide virtual instruction, more so than we did during that period of time. With that said, there were several options presented. There is an option to be fully virtual. I think ideally for the Upper Darby School District, if that were picked, it would be a synchronous model. I think there's a lot to be said for bringing students in. I don't think we're in a position to bring everybody back in all at one time, but the board has the option to pick a virtual model. In the phased reopening plan, on page four, there are four boxes. I'll go through them, and then I'll go through the options that I'm recommending. The first option is an option that brings everybody back in school. If you, if you are following us at home, in the phased reopening plan template, I'll go through these four options, I believe they're on page four. So the first box is a total reopen for all students and staff, but some students and families opt for distance learning out of safety and health concerns. The school district is still obligated to provide that option in these, in either one of these, flexible or full in-person options. We are prepared that if the school board wants to open for in-person instruction, we would try, we would be prepared to provide virtual instruction for students. It would be asynchronous to a point. If we did have enough students who selected virtual learning and freed up enough staff to teach synchronously, we would make that switch and provide those teachers with a synchronous model. We won't know that until the board takes action this evening, and we will follow up with the communication, asking students to register for a virtual session. We'll then be able to switch into a synchronous model if enough staff is freed up to do so. I do want to ask for cooperation from the public. If you do select virtual, and I understand if you do, and the reason why you would, please work with us that if you decide this isn't working out, and you'd like to come back either for full in-person or the flexible model, if the school district goes in that direction, that you allow us to flex you back in at a semester break where there'd be a much smoother transition for students. So students who opt for that, we'd like to work with you and allow you to come back for in-person if you choose to do so, or if the district comes back for in-person, and it's safer to do so. The next option is scaffolded reopening. Some students are engaged in in-person learning while others are distance learning, some grade levels in-person, other grade levels remote learning. I found that throughout the world, other countries have focused probably a lot on this plan, thinking that older students can do well on their own in a virtual environment, and younger students should be in-person, so that there's been a focus on bringing younger students in for more instruction in-person around the world and phasing secondary students in later. So the idea might be, we go virtually with high school and middle school students to begin the year, and elementary school students, we try to get them all in as much as possible, and then bring secondary students in over a period of time. We are not recommending option one, and we are not recommending option two here in the school district. In the school district, we're, the administration is recommending option three, blended reopening that balances in-person learning and remote learning for all students, and we will also provide an option for distance learning for those students and families who do not want to return to school at all. We would provide that. I want to reiterate again what that recommendation would be. The recommendation at the elementary level would be half-day cohorts, four days per week with AM and PM sessions. We'd like to try to have some preferential parenting support for that, but we can't guarantee that we guarantee you an AM or PM session. This is all about the space and the number of teachers that we have, and I'll explain that again when we get to the middle school. But the recommendation would be half-day cohorts, four days per week, AM and PM at the elementary school. To be clear, I know there's comments coming in about special education. Special education students in our life skills program, in our autistic support program, in our multi-disabled program would be coming in four days a week for full in-person instruction, four days a week, and would not be co-horted in. We'd be practicing, obviously, hygiene, social distancing, and mask wearing in that model, but we do believe that the special education students in those programs do need a higher level of instruction and support. Obviously, parents in special education who would opt for virtual would have the same opportunities as anybody else. And that would be the case elementary, middle school, and high school as far as special education is concerned. Middle school, there were two options presented. The school district recommendation from the superintendent is to bring cohorts and put back on teams like we had before. In this model, we think that keeping teams together may be a positive in the virtual model that we can't give in the brick and mortar completely because we don't have enough teachers or space, would be four days per week rotating, three classes in the AM, three in the PM. Because we need to move some Beverly Hills Middle School students over to Drexel Hill Middle School, and there's a lot of misinformation out there, and I want to be crystal clear. It's not because if we were to open live in-person, we can add another 450 students to Drexel Hill Middle School. It's because the classroom, the square footage of the classrooms at Drexel Hill Middle School allow us to provide more social distancing to bring students in, where at Beverly Hills Middle School, the classrooms are smaller, and Beverly Hills Middle School has a considerably higher number of students that are there. As a result, we would be shifting some teachers as well over from Beverly Hills Middle School and some students over. This is not about higher test scores. This is not about some of the comments that are coming in as to what the hidden agenda is. This is simply about providing the same opportunities, educational in-person opportunities that Drexel Hill students get and Beverly Hills Middle School students get. There is no other hidden agenda. And I do want to be clear as well, that if we do have an opportunity to return for full in-person, we have to shift those students back to Beverly Hills Middle School because there wouldn't be enough space for complete full in-person learning for those students to move to Drexel Hill Middle School. I think it's compliments to the school district to try to solve this problem creatively using this space to do these things. This move that I'm talking about, Board President Brown, and members in the public, as well as some of the elementary school moves, would also require a temporary consideration of changing our board policy 206, assignment within district, that we'd come to after this was, we'd be voted on in another meeting, to make a temporary relief of that policy, and I'll work with Mr. Desnoyers to do that. But again, at the middle school level, we'll be cohorts on teams four days per week. And again, at the elementary school level and the middle school level, Wednesday is not a day off. Students are expected to complete their work, asynchronous work, catch up on assignments. We have to give our teachers a chance to meet with students, provide some classroom virtual time with teachers and students and parents who are struggling with some of the work outside to catch up on that. Teachers need some time to refine their lesson plans, and then we get professional development in the afternoon. And we want that to be elementary, middle school, and high school because it's, it's got to be fair for our teachers across the board in this district. It's got to be fair across the board, and that's why my recommendation will be Wednesdays, similarly, elementary, middle school, and high school. The high school model, there were two options. The option that I'm recommending is four periods per day for four days per week. That means eight meetings per three-week rotation. And again, Wednesdays would be distance learning at the high school. Teachers would have office hours to check in with students who need that help, and this would be every week. Teachers would have lesson planning time, as well as some time to get some professional development on, you know, our ability to shift in and out of a virtual environment and an in-person environment. We're all learning this, as you can see, tonight, as we navigate this, it's imperfect, and we're still making those adjustments to try to get it better. But our goal is to make it the best educational opportunity that we can. That would be the recommendation for the blended reopening. The total remote learning for students is the final option, and that means that we would have to provide remote learning synchronously or asynchronously for all students at the same time, and no one will be in-person. We're calling these plans also, Board President Brown, a red phase, a yellow phase, and a green phase. And I know we joked around a little bit in a conversation that we started out in green, and we're not so green, we're kind of yellowish-green right now because there's more restrictions in the green phase that would be there. And we have to be adaptable and flexible that there could be more restrictions. We have to be realistic, too, that if we all don't start to follow the rules, wear your masks, and we're going to talk about encouraging our students and strongly saying, when you're here in the building, wear your mask. It's cool to wear your mask because you don't know who else is at risk. And that's important, as Mrs. Massantonio said. We want our teachers to be safe, we want your moms, your dads, your grandmoms, your grandparents to be safe. Let's be realistic about what we're expecting of each other and come together to solve this problem. So in the red phase, would be virtual only. The school district would only go in that phase if we had to because the Chester County Department of Health advised us to. The school district will not close and shut down necessarily on its own without guidance from the Chester County Department of Health, or Governor Wolf, or Pedro Rivera, as well as the guidance when a teacher might get sick or a student gets sick. We will go to the Chester County Department of Health, they will provide us guidance, they will tell us how to communicate, when to close, when not to close. We're working with them on this, there'll be a decision tree that comes out, and we'll work together on that. I know there's questions about what's going to happen. I could tell you that there's a strong momentum to not close schools. Many school districts, many school districts are opening for full in-person only. They may have newer facilities, they have more space, we are not equipped to necessarily do it the same exact way, and there's a lot of reasons for that here. So in the red phase, it would be virtual only. The yellow phase is similar to what we're talking about here. We would provide some level of in-person if the social distancing and the guidelines permitted in the yellow phase at that time, as well as virtual learning. I do believe in the yellow phase, it would probably be more synchronous yellow, in the yellow phase synchronous instruction than in-person, but again, the guidance at the time will help us make that decision. There could be a time that even one school might be in a different phase than another school in this district because of the cohorts or because of what we have going on. I could tell you that I've already experienced this summer that we've had situations where we've had to deal with a staff member or what they call a contact of a contact of somebody who tested positive, and the time and energy to get answers is not easy. So we have to be understanding and flexible with how we make these decisions. Currently in the green phase, what we're recommending is what I described, which is a flexible cohorting, which is a combination of in-person instruction and virtual learning, with an opportunity to flex out to only virtual learning for all students, as well as providing virtual learning for those students and families who don't feel comfortable coming in at all. And we need to be flexible. Right now, the green phase has serious restrictions, cleaning restrictions have been in all phases. We will have deep cleaning of our schools, deep cleaning of our buses. We will be taking temperature checks in our plan. There's a lot of people who believe taking temperature checks isn't a good idea. We're going to give our best effort to have temperature checks. We're talking about using CARES money to bring in close to $300,000 in additional hourly nurses to make sure that we have temperature checks for students who come in for taking temperature checks on our buses. We are going to have staff wear shields, face shields and masks and provide that for them. And we want our students to cooperate with us. We want our students to wear masks when they're transitioning from space to space, and if they're in classrooms, if they're six feet apart, they can communicate with their masks off, that is the recent guidance. But everywhere else, the expectation is that people will follow these guidelines. Also, our families that are home tonight, we need your help. If a child is even closely thinks they're sick, you got to work with us and keep them home. If a staff member is sick, we got to work with them and they got to stay home. We have to have a tremendous amount of flexibility. The reason why I'm recommending a return to some normal in-person with some flexibility because if we return completely, I don't know how we're going to have sub coverages or the support to provide, but we're going to have to provide. So I think we have a very robust plan, imperfect. Again, I can't emphasize, it's flexible and imperfect. I think Dr. Bigleesi, who's been really spearheading a lot of this work, deserves a tremendous amount of credit. You'll notice on page six, there are lists of people that are working on these plans with us that'll be our support. There'll be a team effort and a team communication. We'll communicate out what we can regarding closing our schools, and when we can't communicate something, there's a reason why we can't communicate something as far as a COVID testing positive or staff, staff members that are there. We are working with our parents and our staff, and those members who do not feel for medical reasons they can perform, we're going to work with you. Following this evening, if the board picks option one for a total return to school, we still have to provide our students with a virtual option. We'll put that communication out, hopefully by the end of this week. And if we return with a blended, which is my recommendation, Board President Brown, we also have to provide a flexible model for those students. If we have enough people who don't feel comfortable, let's work together. Because there could be a tipping point where we get enough people who decide that they want virtual learning, that we could provide a better virtual learning opportunity with synchronous instruction, and this will require synchronous instruction, and this will require us working together to make those decisions. And I can't emphasize this enough. It's going to take a community effort, and then when more information becomes available, we should flex into if we can get into more in-person. At the same time, we want to provide opportunities, kids, for socialize. So within reason, clubs after school, in-person or virtually, will still be encouraged so that kids can interact with each other and have those positive moments to share. I guess for me, I don't know if Dr. Manfree, Mr. Salerno, Dr. Puglisi, or anybody else wants to chime in. I don't see the chat. Hopefully, I'm covering enough. Dr. Manfree, feel free to unmute, and you can jump in on if you would like.
Dr. McGary, thank you very much. Members of the board, thank you. I just have one brief addition to what Dr. McGary was explaining, and my addition is in regards to the middle school. The option that we're recommending, the flexible option that we're recommending that Dr. McGary explained, the teaming option with six periods a day, would enable us to have kids not transition. In other words, kids would be staying put in the same classroom, and teachers would be transitioning from one classroom to the other, enabling us to keep our hallways clear in the middle school. We feel pretty confident with the size of our high school hallways that we'll be able to remind our students through some signage that they'll be able to social distance more appropriately than the kids at the middle school would be able to. So we really feel strongly that that is a really strong positive feature, that the kids would be staying put, and the teachers would be rotating from one class to the other.
Thank you, Dr. Manfree. Dr. McGary, were you done? Did you have anything else?
I don't have anything else. I don't know if Mr. Salerno, if I missed anything at the elementary school level, if you were able to, or Dr. Puglisi, but that was my review of where we are with each of these options, and again, my recommendation for the blended.
Okay. Would a member of the board like to make a motion to move one of these options forward? And I think we want to, I think we want to do them individually because there's different options for each of the elementary, middle, and high schools. So I want to do them separately, just so that the public is clear on which one we're selecting based on your recommendations. Okay? Would a member of the board like to make a motion to move one of the elementary school options forward?
President Brown, this is Dr. Hague. My children are about to enter elementary school, so I'd like to make a motion that for the elementary school students, we adopt the flexible hybrid plan where students are on either an AM or a PM program four days a week.
Well, we need a second.
This is Mrs. Mitchell. I second that.
Okay. Are there any comments from the board? We're talking about the elementary school options, and we're making a motion to accept the option that Dr. Hague just described, which is the recommendation of Dr. McGary. Are there any comments from the board?
If I may, President Brown, I'd just like to comment that we did get a fair amount of feedback from parents, that they would like to have their kids consistently in the morning or consistently in the afternoon. I think we all know that consistency is especially important for younger students, and I'm just very happy that we were able to find a medium ground. We know that virtual learning is especially hard for younger kids. At the same time, we just don't have the space to bring them all in. So I think this is a really, though we know, as Dr. McGary has said, it's imperfect, and we know it's going to be difficult, I think this is the best that we can do with the situation that we have, and I thank the administrators for working so hard on it.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. McGary. Just so that I'm clear, the elementary school students for, that would be in AM or PM, they would consistently be in AM or PM. They wouldn't switch back and forth between the two. Is that correct?
Correct. That's my understanding. Mr. Salerno, anything I'm missing with that?
Mr. Brown, yes, that is correct. They would be consistently in an AM or a PM cohort. They would not switch between the two.
Thank you very much, Mr. Salerno.
And I think that, you know, when the board talks about this piece of it, we go through each elementary, middle school, and high school, and then public comment, I guess, before we take action on those.
Yep, yep. Okay, Mrs. Curry, any other comments? Mrs. Curry?
Yes, thank you. This is Mrs. Curry. I just want to also acknowledge the administrators for working extremely hard on these options. I know that there is no easy plan, and we're all hoping that we can get back to a normal plan with everyone being back in school regularly, but at this time, I feel like we, you know, with the blended and the AM/PM for elementary, it will at least get them back in the building at a safe distance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments from the board? Mr. Neal?
Thank you, President Brown. Yeah, I just want to second Ms. Curry's statement earlier about administration. They've done a wonderful job putting this together. I do have a question for Dr. McGary. I know earlier you said that parents may switch at, like, a semester. Could, is that regarding any quarters, or is it just that one time mid-year that a family could switch from virtual to in-person, or the in-person blend to virtual?
Yes. So the option would be that if you opted to be virtual, we'd ask that you at least consider working with us for the semester, so that at the break, let's say winter break, if you wanted to go either virtual or back to the in-person or flexible, that we would be able to schedule you to bring you in that way, and we would provide that flexibility as far as space is concerned. So we'd have to work with those numbers to make sure that that's a reality to do that, and doing it in the middle of the year, middle of a semester, is more difficult. But, you know, Mr. Neal, to tell you the truth, I don't think we legally could keep somebody out anyway, so we'd have to work with families. I'm just asking for families to work with us as we do that. We would not make it mandatory to be there the entire year, either way.
All right. Thank you, Dr. McGary. And this was David Neal, by the way.
Sorry.
Any other comments from the board? Okay. Mrs. Buford, comments from the public, and I know you may have gotten overall comments about all the options, but we're really trying to focus on comments specific to the elementary piece right now?
There are no comments specific to the elementary piece. There are parents commenting from an elementary parent's perspective.
Okay, we'd like to hear those comments now.
Okay. So there are two of those, of such comments. One is from Shawante Evans, located at 250 Cambridge Road in Clifton Heights. We received her comment tonight at 5:33 PM via email regarding new business item 18.2. All of these are regarding that new business item. Before I read the comment, I wanted to reiterate a couple of things. Typically, these comments are read, but they are not always answered in this scenario at our board meetings. Our questions have generally been answered by the superintendent and by the board members, and then by the FAQ and other previous board minutes. So I just want to make that clear, that we're going to run through the comments and not necessarily answer them.
And if the board so feels that there's something that we need to address after this meeting, we'll follow it up with updating our FAQ.
Dr. McGary, and I'll leave it to your discretion. Sometimes there's simply a quick question or something you can easily clarify and provide an answer for that parent. So I'm going to look to you to leave it to your discretion. If it's something you want to just address quickly and answer, then, you know, we can put it to bed if we need to. Point taken, Mrs. Buford, though.
Sure.
And Board President Brown and Ms. Buford, with that said, if the general, I think what I'm hearing you say, Mrs. Buford, the general comments are about the reopening in general and not just a particular level. So if we want to go through those now and then have the board come back to those options, or have the board finish their options, because there isn't a particular for each level?
No.
I think her comment was about elementary.
I see two of them from the perspective of a parent, but not necessarily related to questions about elementary options. So, and I'm only going to read these because they're mentioning the context of elementary. So there's Ms. Shawante Evans at 250 Cambridge Road, Clifton Heights.
May I interrupt? I'm sorry, this is David Neal. Could I make a motion to actually read all of the comments for the all levels right now, and then we can proceed to a vote on the three plans? And then I would need a second if someone wanted, someone else wanted to read all the comments.
I don't think we need a motion on this, Dr. Hague. I don't believe we need a motion on that, but I would also like that to happen.
Me, too. I'm not quite sure, this is Rachel, why we started voting before we had the public comments. I just, I don't want to vote until we hear all the public comments, and I don't want to make a mistake on this.
Okay, so let's hear.
I'll support that as well. Done.
Okay, I think we heard enough yeses, that we'll hear all the public comments before we move forward, so.
Okay, so we'll continue with this one, and then we'll jump back to the start of the comments. Again, Ms. Shawante Evans, 250 Cambridge Road in Clifton Heights, received tonight at 5:33 via email. All of these comments are regarding new business item 18.2. She wrote, she writes, "My children attend Primus Elementary School in Drexel Hill Middle School. I would like Upper Darby School District to consider two full days or AM/PM school schedules for the upcoming school year. I'd also like the district to consider healthy food options, for example, bagged lunch with a dairy." Dairy is what she intended, I'm sorry. "And sandwiches aren't nutritious for children. In addition, if in-person education is cut due to the pandemic, does that mean school tax will lighten up on the community? I know this has been a difficult time for the community, but hopefully, we can make this upcoming school year as positive, safe, and engaging as possible for students and staff." End of comment. The following comment is from Amanda de Terrence, located at 364 Edmonds Avenue in Drexel Hill. Comment received tonight, I'm sorry, earlier today at 11:26 via email. Comment reads, "Number one, transportation slash buses. My 16-year-old daughter attends Alwin Media. How many buses bring children to Alwin in a typical school year? How many more will you add now that they need to distance the kids and their bus aides? How often will the buses be disinfected, and will there be sanitizer available on the buses? Some of our kids cannot wear a mask, so what is the protocol for that?" Number two, facilities. "How often and how thorough will the schools be cleaned and disinfected? Also, for the mask-wearing, since it will still be hot at the beginning of the school year, is there air conditioning available? As we all know, wearing a mask outside in this heat can be difficult, therefore possibly impeding learning." Number three, personnel slash students. "Will it be mandatory for all to wear a mask, students and faculty? Some kids will not want to wear one. They have to have a doctor's note excusing them because of a medical issue. Will temperatures be taken on every student daily? Will students be able to bring a water bottle to school since the water fountains are not allowed to be used?" Number four, curriculum high school. "My son is a senior this year, and like a lot of students, we're approved, were approved for early out and early grad. How will this affect their 'early out,' quote-unquote, if some already have different, have afternoon jobs, and if they are put in a cohort or have to attend in the afternoon, that will interfere with that? Can those students only attend the morning sessions?" End of her comments.
Certainly, Dr. McGary. Some general comments here. As far as cleaning is concerned, deep cleaning every single day with cleaning, expectation of cleaning and wiping down desks between sessions, weekend deep cleanings, on Wednesday, deep cleanings of facilities. We also have purchased, I like to call them the Ghostbuster backpacks that will go around in hydrostatic, electrostatic cleaning mechanisms for our buses and for the buildings. We will require teachers to have a shield or a mask, given their health situation as well. A shield is best. Students obviously can opt out of the mask, given the recent recommendation from Governor Wolf, but we'd encourage that. We will not have an expectation, if we go to the social distancing model, of wearing a mask all day, every day in school, that when in the classroom at five to six feet, that they be allowed to have that mask off. The teachers, on average, will have 200 square feet of social distancing from the students in the classrooms. We are also putting in new water fountains, encouraging students, if they want to bring a water bottle, their own water bottle to the school, we'll have new water fountains that will allow them to refill their water bottles in the school, and obviously, those will be the places we would encourage kids to go, and we would clean them as much as possible. So we will provide opportunities for students to flex in and out, water bottles, deep cleaning of the schools, cleaning of the buses, sanitizer will be around in stations, marking hallways so that students know to socially distance walking through the building as much as possible. And then finally, for a child who is in a VOTEC program, or a special needs program, or has any of those things, all those things will be taken into consideration. I know that's a comment that will come up later, but we will work with those families to make sure that those students get the education. If somebody wants to be an early grad, and we're in a flexible model or a virtual model, we'll make sure that we make that happen.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. Ms. Buford, next comment.
Another reminder I forgot to say is that, as with all other comments at any other board meeting or committee meeting setting, there are three minutes as a limit. So we have our CFO keeping track of that, and we will read the comments up until the three-minute mark.
Thank you.
The second comment is from Melba Spence, located at 3821 Marshall Road in Drexel Hill. Comment received this morning at 11:55 AM via email. Comment begins, "On behalf of my son, whom is now a senior in the autistic support program of UDSD, I'm very upset because he is not getting enough reading, writing, life skills support, and job training support. How much more support will be offered for the disabled in this upcoming school year? Online learning is not successful for those in need of one-on-one support. Feels like everything has been put on hold." End of comment. Next comment from Al Giotti, located at 801 Irvington Road in Drexel Hill. Comment received today at 2:03 PM via email. Comment begins, "In summary, I believe strongly that schools need to fully reopen based on the following rationale, which has been widely publicized. Number one, there is strong scientific evidence that COVID-19 presents lower risk of complications for children. Number two, there is strong scientific evidence that the virus is not transmitted easily from children. Number three, school closures have significant adverse impacts, including, A, create, quote-unquote, 'virtual dropouts.' Moreover, even those who have access to computers and the internet are not learning in the same way. This will increase our country's education gap. B, school closures negatively impact children's health, including weight gain, increased depression, increased suicide rates, et cetera. C, many children depend on the meals provided at school. D, school closures will result in many parents needing to quit their jobs. E, school closures result in increased child abuse and underreporting of this issue. And number four, the American Academy of Pediatrics strongly advocates that the goal should be to have students physically present in school and to do so in a safe way for both students and staff." End of comment.
Thank you. Next.
The next comment is from Jen Everly, located at 934 Ormond Avenue in Drexel Hill. Comment received earlier today at 1:58 PM via email. Comment begins, "Please instruct the schools to plan for the worst and be prepared to have online classes due to another spike in cases for the 2020-2021 school year. The cases are spiking again now in July, and the second phase is due to hit in the fall, along with the seasonal flu. Plan for the worst case now, and if things go back to normal by some miracle, kids and teachers already know how to hold in-person classes. I do not want to send my daughter into school, and I should not have to. If Pennsylvania wants to experiment with our children's health, I need to have the choice to keep her home. We need to plan now for all students to have internet, computers, and to have working parents come up with a plan for care. Waiting until the last minute to make the drastic change to homeschooling does not help the parents, teachers, children, or any citizen of Pennsylvania." End of comment.
Thank you.
Next comment, Rich and Kate Maxwell, located at 423 Winfield Road in Upper Darby. Comment received today at 2:28 via email. Comment begins, "What is the timeframe we have to decide if we want to enroll our kids in online learning for a year? Where can we learn more about this option?" Next comment, Bill Danbury, located at 539 Orgal Road in Drexel Hill. Comment received today at 1:28 PM via email. Comment begins, "If 100% online learning is not available at UDHS, is there a process to transition my children to homeschooling for the upcoming school year? Should a portion of a cohort show symptoms of a suspected case, will the entire cohort be quarantined for 14 days? How will impacted people be notified? If a work action occurs due to health concerns, will the student calendar be extended or truncated? Since, quote-unquote, 'large gatherings' are forbidden in Philadelphia, or are we anticipating a similar regulation from Delaware slash Chester County management? Would real-time, quote-unquote, Zoom video instruction be made available part or full-time? End of comment. Excuse me. The next comment is from Mr. Jim Burrows, located at 447 Hampshire Road in Drexel Hill. Comment received today at 3:31 PM via email. There's no reference to which item he's referencing in his comment, but the content implies it's new business item 18.2. item 18.2. Comment begins, "We are truly saddened to announce that we will be withdrawing my daughter from the Upper Darby School District. This was a difficult decision for us. As she will be leaving classmates she has known for most of her life. We were hoping that the school district would open in the fall. However, there is just too much confusion for our public schools right now, and we cannot afford to miss another quarter of school. We have to make definitive plans now to prevent a gap in her studies. Before she departs, she wants to say thank you to all of the teachers," excuse me, "and staff at Drexel Hill Middle School for all their efforts. We feel that they miraculously put together a curriculum from scratch to create some semblance of education for her sixth grade, fourth quarter 2020. She will certainly miss her friends. She will also miss her teachers. She will especially miss the incredible music programs and bands. Thank you all, especially Dr. Manfree, for answering my many and frequent questions, as well as all the administration's efforts. Although this was a difficult decision, in the end, our job as parents is to ensure our children get a great education." End of comment. Next comment, Anne Moore, located at 118 North Cedar Lane. Just a second. I'm gonna have to hold just for a second.
Sure.
I'll take over for you. I believe you're on Anne Moore, 118 North Cedar Lane, Upper Darby. New business 18.2. "I think parents should be given the option to homeschool. My son is in Highland Park Elementary School, and I think the school district should offer to those of us that feel it's unsafe to homeschool our children. As a parent, are we given that as an option for our children? I'm petrified. My son has special needs and I'm low resistance. I'm so afraid to send him and have him get sick. So, what about his PCA? Is she safe? This really scares me." Next comment is from Monique Bunny, 937 Harrison Drive, and I apologize in advance if I mispronounced her name. "Will there be any emotional and behavioral health support in the event of a teacher falling ill or a student dying? I have great concern about anyone passing away and explaining that to students." I do think this is an important one, and we do have a plan to communicate any kind of a crisis situation here in the school district. Point made. Number 10, Catherine Newell, 22 Second Street Lansdowne, in parentheses, in Upper Darby boundary. Comment is under new business 18.2. "If children required a mask throughout the day, what plans will be in place for children who have panic attacks and difficulty breathing, wearing a mask for long periods of time? I would like to know what the procedure would be." The next one is from Brian Newell, 22 Second Street Lansdowne. New business 18.2. "What is your cleaning procedures going to be between classes?" Number 11, Shajanti Evans, 250 Cambridge Road. I'm sorry, Ms. Buford already read that one. Next comment, 13, Kate Smith, 4716 Cedar Lane, Drexel Hill. New business 18.2. "This is a comment for the new business item, past item phase, school reopening, health and safety plan. The specific plan does not get into the level of detail. Recent presentations to the community regarding potential regrouping of students, recognizing that the shift in students from BH to DH is to address available classroom distance, distancing as well as physical well-being. I have a concern about academic well-being and educational opportunity. Under the proposed models, the average roster for a DH, a teacher at DH would be 160 students, five sections of 32, while the average roster for a teacher at BH would be 100 students, five sections of 20. Not only would this imbalance impact the equity of overall access to teachers by students generally across the middle school level, but it would also logically impact teachers' ability to differentiate to meet student needs, which could threaten teacher morale if generating student growth is attached to evaluations. That seems concerning, given teacher and sub shortages, et cetera, that we have been hearing about for many years. This is, this reassignment plan seems particularly impactful to Highland Park students since they would be, would be reassigned to more than 150% higher student-to-teacher overall ratios than they would if they attended Beverly Hills. Why is Highland Park selected for this adjustment? Is it the highest performing of the BH feeder schools? And did administration feel it would be less impacted by the, by the reassignment? This plan seems to set up DH for growth shortfalls. How will this be addressed? It is, is it not an area of concern? If not, would you be willing to explain why not? Will the district hire additional teachers to equalize the overall roster adjustments, assignments? 14, Bonnie Prendeville, 614 Wilton Avenue. New business 18.2. "What will happen if and when a student, teacher, staff, member, or visitor to the building, or anyone they live with or come in contact with outside of school, comes down with COVID-19? Won't the teacher and all the students he or she came in contact with have to be quarantined for two weeks? What about the teachers who do not have enough sick days to cover the quarantine time, where they were only affected because of the failure to keep them safe? Subs will be required to, but, subs will be required, but what about the risk those who work at multiple schools put on everyone else at those schools?" 15, Rameya Bagum, 7278 Covin Road, Upper Darby. I believe this is for new business 18.2, but it's not in there. "Are the cohorts changeable, or are they permanent for the rest of the year? Can you elaborate on the plan and how this cohort thing works? I've heard that the, that the there is an afternoon cohort and mornings would be online. If this is true, what is the point of having the online when you are going to have, to go in person anyway? Why not just have online for the whole day?" 16, Reverend Gregory Gilbert, 818 Child's Avenue, Drexel Hill. New business 18.2. "In a previous informational meeting with parents, you mentioned that the Pennsylvania Board of Education was insisting on students meaning there are 180-day required days of instruction and allowed for five days of distance learning. How can you, how can your proposed plan be reconciled with those rules?" I believe Ms. Buford wants to take back over.
Number 17, this comment is from Ms. Jill Altman, located at 3846 Ian Street in Drexel Hill. Comment was received tonight at 8:09 PM via email. Comment begins, "At what point would we know whether synchronous learning would be available if we selected all virtual? I would certainly consider going all virtual, at least with my 10th grader, if I knew there would be synchronous learning. I don't want virtual with asynchronous. If we did select virtual, could we switch to the cohort model if it wasn't working?" End of comment. Number 18, comment is from Mr. James Santora, located at 5228 Apache Lane. Comment received tonight at 8:18 PM via email. Comment begins, "We ask that whatever plan you choose that it takes into account routines and how important they are, especially routines of students who are a part of our special education programs and children who have autism. It's also important for families with both parents who work outside of the home. We have students who are part of the Delaware County VOTEC program and need to make sure they can fully participate in that program, as this is a career path for the students, and we all know that we need more people in the trades, as well as the other programs that are offered in the Delaware County Technical School. Routine is important, and having students go into morning some days and afternoon other days could impact many of our students one way or another. If you're going to do the half-day model, we just ask that you consider having students participate only in caps, in the morning in school learning, or only in caps in an afternoon in school learning, not splitting it up. If that is not a possibility, we do ask you to consider some flexibility for students that fall into categories above listed, listed above. We know you are in unprecedented times and that this is not easy. Thank you for your consideration." End of comment. Next comment from Angel Carroll. We're gonna skip this comment. There is no address that has been provided. Ms. Hinkson, can you look back at that email for me, please, or email Ms. Carroll to see if we can get her email, her physical address? Next comment, Timothy Bruno, located at 58 North Penn Street, Clifton Heights. Comment received tonight at 8:32 via email. Comment begins, "Many plans have been proposed for continuing athletics, and the proposed plan seems feasible. My question is, what plans and policies are in place for non-athletic activities such as music, theater, and other student activities?" End of comment. Next comment from Lee Jordan, located at 90 Pilgrim Lane in Drexel Hill. Comment received tonight at 9:07 via email. Comment begins, "Will there be time in between the sessions to sanitize the school? It just seems like a lot of moving parts." End of comment. Next comment by Lori Patterson, located at 717 Concord Avenue in Drexel Hill, received at 9:13 tonight via email. Comment begins, "Number one, what percentage of the distance learning in the recommended models will be synchronous? Will the same curriculum be offered? Number two, how many parents will need to opt into a full-time virtual model for there to be synchronous learning? Number three, if and when there is a move to at-home learning, is the district prepared to provide rigorous academic synchronous learning?" End of comment. Next comment is from Ms. Michelle Fitzpatrick. Again, no, no physical address. Ms. Hinkson, can you reach out to Ms. Fitzpatrick so we can get her comment in prior to the end of the meeting? Next comment is from Mr. Chris Culp, located at 930 Fairfax Road in Drexel Hill, tonight. It was received at 9:22 via email. Comment begins, "Hello, board members, and thank you for all, for all your hard work. If an elementary child is staying home and going with virtual learning, will they still be sticking with an AM or PM cohort?" End of comment. That's, that's the end of all the comments that meet the guidelines for submission of comments. We still have two pending comments. If Dr. McGary would like to respond while we're waiting for those, or you tell me what you'd like to do next.
Well, I think there were so many questions. I don't, I don't wanna, you know, have him try to remember all of the comments. I think I wanna direct people to the FAQs that we'll be making more robust and adding answers to. I think we have all of the comments captured in the spreadsheet, if I'm not mistaken. So, that will be the, that will make up the gist of the FAQs that, in addition to the one that already exists, just expanding on that, so everyone will be able to go get the answers that they need.
Also, there are some comments coming in and in real time right now. So, if you will be patient with me, I can look to see if there's anything that we have not covered.
Sure. So, what we'll do is, you know, we, I think you detailed the elementary school plan, and we have a motion for that. Okay, so we'll, we'll just, we'll wait for the rest of the comments, and then we'll actually vote on them, then we'll do the others.
Okay, I'm ready with the next one.
Sure.
We have Ms. Bonnie Prendeville. We do not have her address on the record. Ms. Hinkson is, is finding that. Ms. Bonnie Prendeville is the secretary of the district, so we know her personally. We do know that she lives in the area. We will provide her, her physical address for the record, however. Her comment reads, "What will happen if and when a student, teacher, staff member, or visitor to the building, or anyone that lives, they live with, or come into contact with outside of school comes down with COVID-19? Won't the teacher and all the students he or she came into contact with have to be quarantined for two weeks? What about the student, the teachers do not have, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. This has been covered. I apologize."
So, when you say it's been covered, you're saying it's been covered-
It's been read.
Oh, it's been read.
Yes, sir.
Got it.
Okay, this comment is from Ms. Michelle Fitzpatrick, located at 908 Roberts Avenue. Her comment begins, and it came in at 9:16 PM. Her comment begins, "Please help me to clarify this plan. How is it fair that each of our Drexel Hill Middle School teachers are responsible for five periods a day, with 32 students, equally, totaling 160 compared to five out of 20 students, totaling 100 for BHMS? This is not fair to the Drexel Hill teachers and to the students of Drexel Hill that need more independent help. I understand you can't split even, but this is almost 60% difference. My concern is office hours and distance learning support will be much more for the DHMS teachers. Will they be able to meet each student's needs?" End of comment.
There's still comments coming in?
Yes, this comment is from Ms. Kia Reeves. She did not include her address. This comment is from Mr. Christopher Culp, which I believe-
We already read it.
We already read. So, we're all caught up.
Okay. All right, so I think we're at the point where we can vote, and we're gonna vote on the elementary one. We've read all, we've heard all the public comments that have come in to date. So, with that said, we are voting on the elementary school option recommended by Dr. McGary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record.
Leah Dogg, aye oppose.
Okay. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Okay, motion carried. The middle school option. Dr. McGary, you wanna just quickly summarize that particular option?
Yes, as we've gone through all of them, the, the recommendation from the administration is cohorts on teams, four days a week, rotating. With AM and PM sessions, there'll be three cohorts at the middle school level. With Wednesdays for an opportunity to catch up on work, asynchronous instruction will take place on Wednesdays. Teachers will have office hours, professional development, and lesson planning time.
Thank you very much. Are there comments from the board on the middle school option?
Yes, this is Mrs. Curry.
Okay.
I'm, I'm a concerned parent about the Highland Park catchment. I know that there's been a lot of comments that have come through about the decision for the administration to take children from the Highland Park catchment over to Drexel Hill from Beverly Hills Middle School. One of my questions is that if we take the students from Beverly Hills and the new students who just graduated, they will be going over to Drexel Hill as well. Once COVID has, once we've gone back to a nor, if you can say quote-unquote "normal" schedule, what will that mean for the students that have been taken out of their middle school over at Beverly Hills? And this is directed towards Dr. McGary. What will that mean for the students and how will the adjustments be made to help the students if they, from what I understand, have to go back to Beverly Hills, if we get, if we do get back to a regular schedule? Thank you.
Yes, and depending on how this works out, Ms. Curry, thank you for your question. Depending on this works out, the flexible opportunity may be that, that it's beneficial on some level. But if it's not, and we return to full in-person, and that's the recommendation, and it's safe enough to do that, yes, we would recommend at the break, an easier transition at winter break, if we could return in the spring to full in-person learning, then yes, we would encourage that Beverly Hills Middle School students would go back to, to Beverly Hills Middle School, simply because we wouldn't be able to fit them all in-person at Drexel Hill Middle School. And to the other comments that I've been, I believe that the board have asked regarding to the number of kids in a class, historically, Beverly Hills Middle School has had higher teacher-student ratios compared to Drexel Hill Middle School. So, I guess my frustration with that comment is, what we're trying to do is equalize educational opportunities for in-person instruction and class sizes, on average, in-person, that would range between nine to 11 kids in a class at a time, compared to a full in-person session at Beverly Hills where the class sizes are over 30 on average. So, for me, the equity issue is an ongoing piece, and we should get behind building a new middle school to ease that for in-person instruction. This is not about taking higher-achieving students from one neighborhood to another neighborhood. It just works out that in the methodology we use, which is the same methodology we talked about when we move students around the district anyway, this works out better in the, in the plans that we have. So, we're balancing it, and we will also be shifting teachers from Highland Park to Beverly Hills Middle School, or to Drexel Hill Middle School. So, as students move over, we'll also be shifting over staff. Dr. Manfree, anything you wanna add to that?
No, Dr. McGary, just that the staff will be-
No, Dr. McGary, just that the staff will be coming from Beverly Hills, shifting over to Drexel Hill, not from Highland Park, but I understand what you're saying.
Yes.
Approximately four staff members from Beverly Hills Middle School will be shifting from Beverly Hills to Drexel Hill Middle School to help account for some of the larger numbers that the teachers will be responsible for at Drexel Hill.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. Thank you, Dr. Manfree. Any other comments? I'll get to the public ones in a minute. I'm going to finish with the board. Any other comments from the board on the middle school option recommended by Dr. McGary?
This is Dr. Hague. Do we have a motion on the table, or are we just sort of commenting on the plan right now?
We'll get the comments. We didn't do the motion yet, but we'll get that in a minute. We'll just get the comments. Thank you for reminding me that. Thank you. Do you have a comment, Dr. Hague?
Yeah, I just want to sort of comment and clarify for people that it's four days a week for the school to be open, but the students are going to be in two days a week for half-days each. So the phrasing on some of that has been a little bit confusing, and that there's four cohorts rotating through this four-day schedule coming in twice a week. Just want to make sure that's clear for everyone.
Yeah, sorry. Thanks for clarifying that.
Thank you, Dr. Hague. Are there any other comments from the board on the middle school option?
This is Mr. Des Neuer. I have a comment.
Certainly, please proceed.
The coronavirus pandemic has been and will continue to be a challenge for the world, country, state, and district. District administration was charged with developing a plan to reopen district schools. In short, there is no best answer to this problem. I believe that district administration has done an admirable job developing a reopening plan that is as fair as possible, taking into account the constraints under which the district operates: financial constraints, facilities constraints, employees, and student populations, et cetera. Upper Darby is doing more than some districts and less than other districts. The reopening plan on which the school board is voting this evening offers the best hope for our students and employees to have a reasonably successful year. Given the recent uptick in COVID-19 cases nationally, however, we have to be ready to implement additional measures if the situation worsens regionally or locally. With all this said, I support Upper Darby School District's phased reopening health and safety plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Des Neuer. Are there any other comments from the board on the middle school option recommended by administration? Okay, Mrs. Buford, additional public comments have come in?
Yes, there are two. One is from Ms. Angel Carroll located at 4202 Garrett Road in Drexel Hill, received tonight at 8:21. She just sent in her physical address. Comment begins, "I wanted to know how I can become more involved with the school board and community advisory group slash pupil service committee. I would also like to express that I am not comfortable sending my child to school physically, but would like to take advantage of the online option." And she leaves her email and phone number. Thank you for your time. End of comment. The next comment is from Mr. Chris Culp located at 930 Fairfax Road in Drexel Hill. Comment received at 9:51 tonight via email. Comment begins, "Is there a virtual option for middle school students?" End of comment. And there is one coming in live right now. This comment is from Ms. Erica Fulton located at 2634 Eldon Avenue in Drexel Hill. Comment begins, "When will notification be sent on what cohort children are assigned?" End of comment.
Okay, so I think we've heard all the comments from the board, and we've heard all the comments from the public. Would a member of the board like to make a motion to move the middle school option forward?
This is Don Fields. As the parent of an upcoming Drexel Hill middle schooler, I would like to make a motion to adopt the hybrid plan as described by Dr. Manfree and Dr. McGary.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Dr. Hague, I second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. Okay, I think we're up to the high school option. Dr. McGary, you want to just give us a quick synopsis of that option that you're recommending, please?
Yes, and I appreciate, Dr. Hague, there's going back and forth. The high school has three. So elementary, two; middle school had four. High school has three options for virtual instruction, in-person instruction, flexible instruction. So the high school in-person cohorts will be three cohorts. We're recommending four periods per day for four days per week, essentially becoming eight meetings per three-week rotation or five meetings per week. Wednesdays would be, again, similar to the elementary school and middle school with an opportunity for distance learning, catching up on their work, communicating with staff in virtual meetings. Staff would have professional development time and lesson planning time.
Thank you very much, Dr. McGary. Do it in the right order this time. Would a member of the board like to make a motion to move the high school option that he recommended forward?
President Brown, this is David Neal. I'd like to make a motion to proceed with the proposal by administration.
Thank you.
For the high school.
Thank you very much, sir. Do we have a second?
This is Leah Dawes, I second.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments from the board on the high school option?
I just have one question, and it goes back to the comment, the public comment, about those students from the high school who will be going to have early out and things like that for jobs that they have. So I just wanted to see if we could get a little bit of clarification on that.
So Ms. Curry, are you asking for students who already have an early-out schedule?
Yes, there was a comment from a parent that talked about students who already have early-out schedules and also those students who will be going to VOTEC.
Yes, Ms. Kelly Simone and Dr. Manfree will be working with those parents to make sure that they're scheduled. Just to be clear, the high school schedule that we're running is giving the students every class possible that they've requested as if it were a normal schedule. So even down to the leveling at this point in time, we're running the schedule for those students to work with them. So if students need to be in the AM or the PM, I can imagine that Mrs. Simone and Dr. Manfree are making sure that they're working with VOTEC students and students that have a half-day program.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. Are there any other comments from the board on the high school option being recommended? Hearing that, Mrs. Buford, are there any comments from the public? Has any more comments come in from the public?
Yes, we have two more comments.
Okay.
The first comment is from Ms. Lisa Grebel located at 715 Blythe Avenue in Drexel Hill. Comment received at 9:56 p.m. via email. Comment begins, "How are kids with IEPs getting their time, they need of extra help if they are going to school two times a week?" End of comment. Next comment from Ms. Danielle King located at 22 West Broadway Avenue. Comment received at 9:58 p.m. via email. Comment begins, "Is the district going to address the comments in regards to what is going to happen if a staff member or a student gets COVID-19? Will they have to quarantine for 14 days? If so, how will that affect my child's attendance? Also, who is going to teach the other cohort if a teacher has to be out to quarantine, and especially if there are not enough guest teachers?" End of comment.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready to vote. We've heard all the comments from the board and the public. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye on the high school option.
Aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify...
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Okay, we're moving on to the next item of new business, the declaration of an emergency under Section 520.1.
I'm pregnant, Brown.
Yes.
Can I make a comment? I'm sorry, can I make a comment? This is Leah Dawes. Can I make a comment before we move on to new business? I apologize. I just wanted to make sure we got all of our votes out and we heard all of the public comments before I move forward with a comment. I just really want to say thank you to Dr. McGary, the staff, the administrators, for the hard work and the tireless conversations that we've had in regards to these plans. Thank you to the teachers for providing their input. Thank you for the community members, parents, guardians, that submitted their questions and concerns. All of those were read and taken in by the board, as well as the administrators, as well as the superintendent. Those emails, those conversations were vital to this plan and how we move forward. I just want to start off by saying thank you to that. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dawes. The declaration of an emergency under Section 520.1, Dr. McGary.
Yes, this is a resolution that suggested that since the board has passed tonight or agreed to a flexible learning opportunity, as you can see in board docs, there is an opportunity for the board to pass a resolution declaring that the school is moving in this direction based on the World Health Organization and Center for Disease Control, known as the CDC, Imprevention CDC. They have declared a novel coronavirus, COVID-19, a public health emergency of international concern, and the United States Department of Health and Human Services has declared that COVID-19 creates a public health emergency. And whereas on March 6, 2020, the governor of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania proclaimed the existence of a disaster emergency throughout the Commonwealth pursuant to 35 PA school code 7301(c) due to COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas on March 13, 2020, the President of the United States proclaimed a national emergency concerning the COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas the CDC, Pennsylvania Department of Education, Pennsylvania Department of Health, and Chester County Department of Health have issued guidance with respect to precautions that should be taken in school settings to reduce the spread of COVID-19, and whereas the Board of School Directors of the Upper Darby School District finds that it is impossible or impractical to comply with the guidance of the CDC, Pennsylvania Department of Education, Pennsylvania Department of Health, and or Chester County Department of Health, and provide education with in-person attendance of all pupils during the prescribed length of school days, typical number of days per week, and usual hours of classes, and now therefore be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of the Upper Darby School District hereby declares that it finds that an emergency exists within the school district for the 2020-21 school year pursuant to Section 520.1 of the Pennsylvania School Code due to the global pandemic of COVID-19, and certifies the same to the Pennsylvania Department of Education. And further resolve that a copy of this resolution shall be presented to the Pennsylvania Secretary of Education for approval of the same and the provision of education provided herein and provided for in the attached health and safety plan. And further resolve that the superintendent of the Upper Darby School District or his or her designee is directed to develop a system of educational services provided through direct in-person instruction and instructional activities, remote virtual instruction and instructional activities, and/or other instructional activities deemed appropriate and provided in a manner that ensures that all such instruction and instructional activities shall be provided under the direction of a certified school employee consistent with the attached health and safety plan. And further resolve that said plan for instruction shall ensure that all students in the district receive no less than 180 days of instruction for the 2020-21 school year, and receive no less than 990 hours of instruction or instructional activities for students grade seven to 12, no less than 900 hours of instruction or instructional activities for students grades one to six, and no less than 450 hours of instruction or instructional activities for students kindergarten. And further resolve that the superintendent or his or her designee shall, to the extent necessary, resubmit the district health plan and safety plan to include this resolution and the attached health and safety plan, or to the extent the district has not yet submitted the district's health and safety plan, ensure that this resolution and attached health and safety plans are submitted to the Pennsylvania Department of Education, and seek the necessary approval from the department. And further resolve that the superintendent or his or her designee, to the extent necessary, are hereby empowered to respond to any inquiries or requests for information from the Pennsylvania Department of Education to ensure the prompt and timely approval of this resolution and attached health and safety plan by the department. Further resolve that the superintendent or his or her designee shall report this board the action taken by the Pennsylvania Department of Education on the proposed health plan and safety plan and this resolution as soon as practical. And further resolve that the superintendent or his or her designee shall develop and implement a system to record student attendance and participation in virtual instruction and/or virtual instructional activities that is equal to the system used to record attendance and participation of students in-person instruction and instructional activities offered at the district's school buildings, and take steps necessary to enforce attendance pursuant to school code for all virtual instruction and all virtual instructional activities. And further resolve that the superintendent or his or her designee is hereby empowered to take the actions needed to implement the provisions of this resolution and to delegate responsibility for the same to other administrators or employees of the district, approved on this date, 2020, by the Board of School Directors of the Upper Darby School District.
Sorry, Dr. McGary, I didn't get that. Can you read that again? No, I'm only kidding. Would a member of the board like to make a motion to move this forward?
This is Mrs. Mitchell. I'd like to move this forward.
Do I have a second?
This is Dr. Hague. David Neal, I second that.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Mrs. Buford, are there any comments from the public on this particular new business item, 520.1?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. Okay, the fourth item under new business is the anti-racism resolution. Would someone like to make a motion for this resolution?
Thank you, President Brown. This is Don Fields. I'd like to read the resolution and move that it be adopted.
Okay. Want to read it before we do a second?
Sounds good.
Please read.
Okay. I'll give a brief explanation, and then I'll read the resolution.
Sure.
I would like to bring forward the following anti-racism resolution. The goal of the resolution is to express the board's desire to stand firm in our collective responsibility to foster an equitable and inclusive environment for every student and for those whose purpose is to serve students. To that end, I am asking the Upper Darby School Board to adopt the following resolution against racial inequity. First, I want to give special thanks to the Upper Darby School District Equity Team for their efforts and assistance in putting together this resolution, as well as for all the work they have done in regards to addressing equity disparities within the school districts. I will now read the resolution. Resolution supporting the development of anti-racist school climate by the Board of Directors of the Upper Darby School District. Whereas, we are deeply saddened and outraged by the recent killing of George Floyd and violence against black men and women and children. The subsequent protests have shined a spotlight on the harmful effects of racism and inequality. Furthermore, the public response has highlighted the racial trauma that our black students, families, staff, and communities have not only endured for centuries but continue to face today. Whereas, we must recognize that racism and hate have no place in our schools and society. However, we must understand that racism is systemic, and it is unconsciously and consciously rooted in our institutions, policies, and practices. Consequently, we acknowledge that we must look at our own school policies and practices through an anti-racist and equity lens to address any traces of racism and inequity that still exist within our own school community. Whereas, we must center the voices of staff, students, families, and communities who have historically endured discrimination and marginalization. Their lived experiences and stories require attention, require respect, require... Their lived experiences and stories require attention, require respect, require empathy, and most importantly, require action. Therefore, it is essential that we establish an expectation that a diversity of staff, students, families, and community members, specifically those that have been ignored, discriminated against, and marginalized, are heard and included on substantive, uh, school and district issues. Whereas, we must better educate ourselves and seek to educate the community on the historical and current impact of racism and discrimination on our students, families, and communities, as well as understand our role in perpetuating such inequity. Through continuous professional development and opportunities for honest dialogue and listening sessions, we hope to build partnerships in the community focused on overcoming systemic racism and the barriers stemming from and perpetuated by systemic racism. By doing so, we can create opportunities to ensure that each child has the tools and supports the needs to thrive. As the district continues to reinforce an inclusive learning environment for all, we must review how our current systems and structures prevent equitable opportunities for the students and communities we serve, including the curriculum and resources we provide, as well as the staff we hire. Whereas, we must advocate to advance civil rights and cultivate an anti-racist school climate necessary to meet the needs of all students in our care. Our students, no matter their identities, deserve to feel safe, to feel seen, and to feel affirmed. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Upper Darby School Board unequivocally stand firm in our collective responsibility to foster an equitable and inclusive environment for every student, staff member, parent, and community member. We commit to use our role as school board directors to recognize, respond, and speak out against injustice and racial inequity in our school community. In support of this goal, the Upper Darby School Board commits to the following action steps. Action Area One: Constructing and Enacting an Equity Vision. Action Area Two: Engaging in Self-Reflection and Growth. Action Area Three: Collaborating with Families and Communities. Action Area Four: Hiring and Placing Personnel. These action areas are described in detail within the district's Equity Plan, Upper Darby School District Comprehensive Equity Plan Proposal 2018 to 2022, located on the Upper Darby website, upperdarbysd.org-page/5576.
Thank you, Mr.--
Go ahead.
No, I was going to say thank you. Were you done? I think you got to the end.
Yeah, I'll have a comment, but I'll let the others comment first.
Okay.
This is, um, I'm sorry, this is Mrs. Curry. I second the resolution.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Mr. Fields? Well, I'm, I think Mr. Fields had one as well.
This is Mr. Desneuer. I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
The recent deaths of George Floyd and others at the hands of law enforcement have sparked deep thought, discussion, and protest across the United States. People and organizations are struggling with the legacy of racism to a greater extent than ever before. Two years ago, the Upper Darby School District formed the Comprehensive Deep Equity Team to review how best the district can incorporate equity into all of its operations, policies, hiring, training, curriculum, discipline, et cetera. This process is far from over, but the anti-res, the anti-racism resolution on which the board is voting tonight is an important step in the long slog towards equity. Therefore, I'm happy to support the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Desneuer. Any other comments from the board? Mr. Ward Savage.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'll keep my comments brief because I realize, uh, the hour of the evening it is, but as an openly queer person of color, who is an alumni in this school district, um, I fully embrace and support this document, and this is just the beginning of a series of steps that have to be taken by not only this board, not only the administration, but the entire school district community, because it is a long time coming. And I look forward to elevating our words from articulation to personification, because that's really what our young people who are making the noise are asking for. And that is what all-time alumni are asking for, and that is what we need, so I support this. And I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Dr. Hague.
Thank you, President Brown. Um, I just want to sort of speak to our students and staff and community members that, who feel that, that change is coming too slowly. We, I think we all, um, I, I think I don't, I don't want to speak for every member of the board, but I have a feeling that what I, that they would agree with what I say, which is that we know that we are imperfect. We know that this is, um, a, a lot, there's a lot of work to be done, and that we are far, we are far from reaching the goals that, um, that are set out here, but that we're, I want every, all of our kids to know just how incredibly committed every member of this board is to those goals, and that we are open to the criticism that we may be falling short of those ideals, and, and that we take that criticism very much to heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hague. Are there any other comments from the board? Mr. Fields.
Hi, um, thank you, President Brown. This is, uh, Don Field. Uh, I just want to say, uh, for the, for those of us, for those of us who have lived here a long time, it is time for a lot of us in Upper Darby to have uncomfortable conversations about race and racism. Only through uncomfortable conversations can we really have an honest dialogue about race, racism, our preconceptions, and our prejudices. And so I implore you, um, everyone, to sit and have those conversations. If you come away from a conversation and it doesn't, it didn't feel uncomfortable, your worldview hasn't changed, that wasn't an uncomfortable conversation, okay? So, and that's all I have to say on that.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. Ms. Dawes.
Sorry, I was having, um, mute issues. So, I support this document, and mo, I think our, our children are demanding a change in the culture of the community, and the change in the culture that is seen in such a diverse school. Um, I look forward to being a part of an environment where the kids feel comfortable about speaking up, and that speak-up isn't just a program, but it then becomes the adopted practice of our, our youth and the teachers that are fighting to do the right things for our youth, and the comments.
Mrs. Curry. Thank you, Ms. Dawes. Ms. Curry.
Yes, good evening. Um, this is Mrs. Curry. I would just like to say that I fully support the anti-racism resolution. Um, I feel that we have been working extremely hard on the Deep Equity Team to, um, work on the comprehensive plan. And as Leah said, um, as an African-American woman who lives here in this community, um, and has been a part of this community for 16 years, and my children have gone through this district and are still there, I fully commit myself to equity in this community. And, um, it is, it is really, really important that when children come forward, or staff members come forward, or administrators come forward with issues like Don Field says that are uncomfortable, that we don't get uncomfortable, that we listen, that we have to be slow to speak and listen. And so I just would encourage everyone through this that we can continue to work together, and that it will be courageous, that those conversations are courageous, and that they're, sometimes they don't feel good when they come forward. And so we need to be able to accept those comments and work diligently to understand racial trauma, to understand victimization, and to understand that these things do happen. So I just want to thank this board and this administration for supporting this important effort to come out to the public and the community to let them know that we are working on this and that we have not turned a blind eye. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Okay, I'll say my comment. Uh, obviously, this resolution is near and dear to my heart. I mean, it's serving on this board. I think it's very important just because of the makeup of our community and the makeup of our board. Our board looks like the community. Uh, so I think we need to have a resolution like this, and it needs to be backed up with clear action, clear plans, um, in everything that we do. It should become second nature, and I spoke about this at the Unity, uh, the Unity Gathering that, uh, it needs to start with introspect, introspection and self-reflection and, and, um, you know, the change needs to start with each person, so, uh, I do support this resolution. Um, it, it means a lot to me, not just in my school board capacity, but in some of the other hats that I wear. Uh, you know, we've been looking at this and working on this for a long time, so it's, it's, uh, it's a good thing. I'm happy to see it move forward, and I'm happy to see it have the overwhelming support that it does. So I think we, do we have a, I think we had a second, uh, already, so we had comments from the board. Uh, now, are there comments from the public on this particular item? Mrs. Buford.
There are no comments from the public on this item.
Okay. I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. Okay, the fifth item under the new business, under new business is a resolution supporting renewable energy. Is there a board member that would like to, uh, make a motion on this item?
Thank you, President Brown. This is Dr. Hague. I would love to read this resolution, um, and then I will make a motion for its adoption.
Please do. Thank you.
This is a resolution urging the General Assembly to require 100% renewable energy in Pennsylvania by 2020, resolution by the Board of Directors of the Upper Darby School District. Whereas, climate change is threatening our way of life by, by straining our infrastructure and emergency and social services, harming our access to food, water, and energy supplies, aggravating health conditions, including respiratory and heart diseases, and causing premature deaths related to extreme events. Whereas, the 2018 United Gov, United Nations Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change found that limiting global warming to 1.5 degrees Celsius is the minimum manageable temperature increase necessary to avoid massive local and international socioeconomic disruptions, and will require rapid and far-reaching transitions in food production, industry, buildings, and transport. Whereas, existing safe, reliable, and cost-effective clean energy power generation can meet the internationally agreed-upon goals. Whereas, a renewable energy initiative can produce large numbers of well-paying local jobs in our region. And whereas, Upper Darby School District is committed to principles of equity, justice, and inclusion, and transitioning to 100% clean energy can help advance these goals by saving money that can be invested into under-resourced schools that are diverse. Sorry, that's my, my, my ad lib there does not say that we are. And helping to address climate change, which disproportionately impacts low-income communities and communities of color. Be it resolved that the Upper Darby School Board, one, encourages residents, businesses, and institutions in the Upper Darby School District to join in the county, state, national, and international movement to transition to 100% clean renewable energy by 2050. I, I hear I misspoke. 2050 is, is the goal, not 2020.
Yes, you scared me.
But, yeah. And number two, seeks to act in partnership with nearby school districts with similar commitments where possible, including the exploration of all viable cooperative energy purchasing opportunities. And number three, supports bipartisan legislation that embodies the goal of, of requiring the entire state to use 100% renewable energy for all purposes until later than 2050. This is House Bill, uh, 1425 and Senate Bills 6 through 0 in the current legislative session, by signing the Penn Environment Coalition Letter, which is attached here. And number four, will submit a copy of this resolution to the elected officials Senator Tim Carney and Representatives Margot Davidson and Mike Zabel of the Upper Darby School District in the General Assembly, and to the Governor of Pennsylvania, which is resolved this 14th day of July, 2020. The Penn Environment Letter is attached, but I won't read it now. Um, uh, so I would like to move this resolution for adoption.
Thank you, Dr. Hague.
This is Mrs. Mitchell. I'd like to second it.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board?
I, I would like to make a comment, and I'll try and keep it somewhat brief, somewhat brief, but, um, as you all know, this is something that's, that's very important to me. Um, our, our primary responsibility as a district is to prepare children for their future. And if we're going to do this properly, we can't ignore the fact that there's existential threat to their future in the form of climate change. Um, the fact that climate change disproportionately impacts low-income communities and communities of color means this issue has a heightened importance for our district. We can't claim to have equity at the heart of our planning without addressing climate change. Um, and for a school district or another entity to transition to 100% renewable energy requires action on three fronts. The source of electricity must be renewable. Uh, local use of oil and gas, such as for heating and cooking, has to be converted to electric. Um, but then the third front is often forgotten, and that's energy efficiency. And the good news is that investments in energy efficiency can, can often pay for themselves through energy savings, sometimes in a relatively short amount of time. We are so lucky to have Marvin Lee and Craig Harnichek. We've already gotten a shout-out once tonight, but they deserve it, they deserve two shout-outs. Um, both of them are really knowledgeable in these issues and are already looking into projects that we can undertake to save energy and money. But, but while we can make progress on that path ourselves, the, the two other fronts that I mentioned, changing the source of our electricity to renewable and converting our oil and gas-consuming appliances to electricity, those are much more challenging goals for us. Um, while I hope that we can use some of our savings from energy efficiency to fund projects in those two areas, as a severely underfunded district, it will be difficult to afford the investments in renewables that we need to make. And so what we really need is action at the state and federal level, and that is why we, we need this resolution. We're asking for state action. Um, and finally, I want to, uh, thank, um, my fellow board members for their anticipated support of this resolution, and I look forward to our making some progress on this essential issue.
Thank you, Dr. Hague. Uh, we have, uh, are there any other comments from the board?
This is David Neill. Um, I just want, I, I concur with, uh, matters of statements. Um, we have, uh, extremely talented, um, employees in the administration that, um, find more energy-efficient, uh, methods of, you know, heating our schools and, and construction materials, all of that, and I applaud them for that. And I think recently during the summer with the pandemic and the fact that Upper Darby has been so transparent in, um, the methodology that we've used to, uh, understand what our community wants and, and what we need during, uh, the school year coming up. A lot of school districts have emailed us, um, offering support and saying, hey, we saw your presentation. We think it's great. And so a lot of people are looking towards Upper, Upper Darby, and I believe, um, this is another initiative that Upper Darby can champion, um, and, and provide a leadership role in. So I just want to thank the administration, um, for all that they do in regards to that.
Thank you. Mr. Fields.
Thank you, President Brown. Uh, thank you, Dr. Hague, for bringing this forward. Uh, um, I really appreciate it. Um, and thank you to our administrators, uh, for supporting, uh, these efforts, uh, uh, the, uh, Marvin Lee and Harnichek, who were already mentioned. Um, I want to say, uh, so Upper Darby is like this perfect storm of, of, uh, uh, things that come across that, that, that kind of pile on each other as far as problems. Um, it's a high level of poverty, uh, uh, climate change is, is an issue, and then, and then we have this COVID. And the, the point I'm making is that one of the, one of the results of climate change is a higher level of asthma. And then one of the groups of people that are very susceptible to COVID-19 and are endangered with COVID-19 are people with asthma. And so things like this, they're, on top of everything else, they're a public health measure, right? To, to address these things, so I, I just wanted to make that statement of how important this kind of work is, and I really do appreciate it.
I really do appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. Are there any other comments from the board? Okay, Ms. Buford, are there any comments from the public on this item?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose, and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain, and state your name for the Motion carried. Okay. Our 99th item, I'm sorry, our sixth item under new business is the transportation routing software services. Mr. Rogers.
I'll try to make this quick. I only have a 12-page resolution to read. Uh, so tonight, we actually are just bringing forward, uh, a new transportation routing software and an additional service. Uh, you'll see the attached resolution outlines the breakdown. It's an initial three-year, uh, deal that would have two one-year options to make it a full five-year if we continue down the path, uh, with this service. Um, you'll see in the first year, it's a, there's a spike in the cost, uh, just about $80,000 over the annual cost, which is also $80,000 over our anticipated budget going into this year for this service. Uh, but we are very confident that that $80,000 will be more than covered in the savings that it'll, it will, uh, produce, and also increase our transportation subsidy revenue based on the efficiencies that are built into this, uh, type of software. So we are, as an administration, not concerned about the increase of that $80,000 there, and that's a one-time cost. It's more of setup, uh, and initiating the, uh, software and services. So if the board has any questions, I'd gladly answer.
Just a quick one. You said you would more to make up for that $80,000 cost in efficiencies. Over what time, you just--
Immediately.
Immediately.
I think within the first year--
Good answer.
Without, without a doubt, in the first year, the, it'll, the, um, savings will cover the additional $80,000.
Okay. Thank you. Would a member of the board like to make a motion to move this forward?
This is David Neal. I'll make the motion to move this forward.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Uh, I think, I think I heard a second already. All right. Are there any other comments from the board?
This is, uh, Don Field. A quick comment. Thank you, Craig, and thank you, Marvin, for, uh, finding these things. I think they're great.
It was all Marvin.
Are there any other comments from the board?
This is Mr. Des Noiers. I would just like to say this is, uh, um, this is a great example of, um, what analytics and technology can do for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose, and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain, and state your name for the record. Motion carried. We are now at the time for the public hearing. We will read both emailed and phoned comments, which are subject to the three-minute time limit. It must include the commenter's name and address. So, Mrs. Buford, I know we heard extensive comments earlier on the one new business item, but are there additional, uh, comments to be read at this time?
There are no additional comments to be read at this time.
Okay. Is there a motion for the adjournment of the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Meeting adjourned. Have a good night. Thank you, everybody. Bye-bye.